So everybody's here.
We are ready, Mayor Walker. We've got 25 people in the audience and all five members of council are on the webinar.
All right. So I called this meeting to order. Ms. Thomas, could you take role?
Mr. Payne.
Here.
Mr. Snook.
Here.
Ms. Walker.
Here.
Ms. McGill.
Here.
Ms. Hill.
Here.
Okay, so I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Richardson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Member City Council. And the public, what we're here today is to go back over the vibrant community funds, which we talked about earlier, and then today about moving forward. What we've been able to do is to answer some of your questions via email that you provided to us, as well as the amount of money that was allocated, and then the amount of money that was used in terms of, I'm sorry, can you hear me? Okay, all right. Yeah, yeah, all right. And then we were supposed to come back to you, the council, to talk about the appropriation of those dollars to the various organizations. So with that, I can turn it back over to the council, or I can have Ryan talk a little bit more about it in details in terms of the funding, about how we split it in terms of having, you know, the 2.1 million and the additional 200,000 in terms of being able to utilize those funds for different programs. So, Ryan.
Oh, you're on mute, bud?
Yeah, I know. So as Dr. Richardson said, with the original proposed budget, we had laid out some allocations for the various community agencies that applied through the Vibrant Communities Fund. As we did the review, we got into the pandemic, which totally changed things, and council had requested additional information on services that were, how services were changing, immediate needs, beneficiary changes, how this was affecting the finances of the agencies. So Kaki and the Human Services Team put together a survey to send out to all the agencies that applied for any funding, not just the ones that were initially recommended, but any that had applied to receive those information. We got that information back. We provided the report to council, which, what we did with that was, at the bottom of each page for the agencies, we provided the update that they had provided to us on what we were calling the COVID-19 updates. Excuse me. And these updates varied from agency to agency, but what you also see was our, this also gives the original description of the program, the original group recommendations from, in terms of agency score on the applications and the importance criteria that were laid out before, and the dollar amounts that were in that report are the original allocations, not a new staff recommendation, just to be clear. Those were the original allocations from the mark, from the original proposed budget. We wanted to leave those in there so you could see what was originally being allocated and being recommended, I should say. And so with that, we, like I said, we added the additional language at the bottom of the report. Kaki and Gretchen and Shayla did a great job of putting together and pulling together all that information. Really want to thank them for, for all the, the work they put into that. That was a huge undertaking to, to get turnover quickly. And at this point, we have approximately 2.1 million, I believe it is, set aside for what was called the Vibrant Community Funds, outside agencies, kind of those human service facing outside agencies, and a little bit more than $150,000 for the arts. The one caveat I will say with, with the arts is they did not do a full application for FY21 because we, during the process, we were still looking at how we would review those and allocate those. So the arts agencies, while they did submit an update to us based on the COVID information, it didn't do an initial, didn't have an whole initial review because we had determined that we were going to hold them level funded from the previous fiscal year. The other thing that was, that is within that 2.1 is there's, we had talked many times about the Pathways Funds, the Emergency Assistance Funds going out to the community. Within that 2.1 was the annual allocation of approximately $84,000, I believe it is, that we send out to, to the Pathways Funds and the Emergency Assistance. So all those are kind of wrapped up into that two-point, roughly 2.2, 2.3 million dollar figure that we have to discuss today for the allocations. Not sure if Kaki has anything else she would want to add at this point. I'm not sure if she wants to add anything. If not, I think at this point, we're here to answer any questions you may have about funding, agency responses, initial, what the programming is, what the programs do. But at this point, I think it's kind of a, up to the council to start deciding and, or, excuse me, discussing the agencies and deciding how they want to work out potential allocations. One thing I will say, I did bring this up with Mr. Blair earlier today. After we make the decisions today, any decisions we make today, we'll need to do a resolution to actually allocate those funds because we originally appropriated these into a lump sum. So we'll, July 20th, should we be able to get through all the decisions today on July 20th, we can go ahead and make those allocations. However, that should not really delay getting funding out to the agencies because in the interim, from once the decisions are made to the time we can send out the checks anyway, we have to get signed agency funding agreements from them, fill out some, the finance paperwork, get the checks ready to be processed. And so that will take us a couple of weeks to fully work through all of that. So there shouldn't be much of a delay as far as that going out if we have to, you know, going with the resolution on July 20th.
Can, can you just speak really briefly, just, obviously we have a summary that shows where some of the ratings were in February versus June, and there were a few subtle changes between that. Just explain the thought process of that based on the COVID responses.
I'm gonna let Kaki chime in on that one.
Because something that we just had some corrections that we were making from the reports.
Yeah, there was, within the report, there were a few, few areas where there was some, some subtle corrections where in the initial report that went out, we had a ranking that would have put them in a funding category, but we didn't, we had it listed at zero dollars with some typos like that, and they're important. There were some that had rankings, typos in there that said they were a 2B, which would have not gotten them funded when in actuality, they had fallen within that 2A category. So it was just a typo. So we corrected a couple of those in the report. And there was a couple agencies based on, on some of the COVID information that they were resubmitted, and based on the work that they were doing during this pandemic that I guess reclassified into different levels, mainly in the importance side, where we had the application scores we didn't change, but it was more on the importance of the services being provided. And that importance ranking was not about the specific program and didn't speak specifically to the, the job that we thought they, they were doing, or the application was doing, but rather the importance of that specific service in meeting and helping advance the goals that, the five overarching goals and the, the council had set out for us. I believe it was affordable housing. I'm going to get these wrong, so I might need Kaki to, to jump in on these. Affordable housing, self-sufficiency, economics, I can't remember all those.
Jobs and wages, public education.
Education. And so that's where that, we saw a little shift in some of those agencies based on the work they were, were doing now and projected to do into the future while this pandemic was still out. And those were the real changes, and I don't have, I'm not have that list in front of me right now. I don't know if Kaki can speak to those a little bit more.
Yeah, I think the, that any changes in the money numbers were to correct errors. There are some changes in the way we presented information to talk about how somebody is responding to COVID that might be different from the way they were responding to the certain normal conditions in the community. But the numbers, the only numbers that changed were ones that were to correct errors. So while we presented some information, and there was a lot of interest from you all about identifying sort of who, which of the agencies was meeting basic needs, or what the basic needs, how you, how staff might prioritize those basic needs. And we had identified sort of in general to, I believe, to an email from Councilmember McGill about basic needs being housing, feeding, and healthcare programs. And then the next tier being like a family support category of after-school programming to support young people, and then flexible mental health services. So those, that's the sort of only recommendation sort of category that we could say that staff contributed. The reports that you all have were really just aggregated data from the updates.
So some of the organizations were able to go through and say that they didn't need the same amount of funding as they had originally requested that they weren't going to be able to do as much with it. Is that reflective here? I guess I should have asked this before, but in this.
Yes, that data, are you looking at summary of responses to current and projected status? So that's when people predicted lower revenues or or lower expenses. And then you can see whether their beneficiaries were anticipated being changed as well. And this is very, this is all directly from the reports, updated reports that they gave us.
So is there, I guess, interest in? I don't have a way, I mean, some of this, you know, my thoughts are, there were some organizations who said, who they're, that it was totally different from what their original mission and the work they've been doing forever. So it's clear that they're going to be trying to figure things out, but I know we all are. So that's kind of my hang up there. But it seemed clear that some of the things that they would normally be doing that they just would not be able to do during this time. And I guess if there's any thought in just kind of maybe processing, like eliminating them from the discussion at this point. Looking for my original list. I guess I was talking about the original set priorities when I made my comments that were the same as the working group comments. And Kaki, was there any thought about organizations that have asked for money through this process, but that were also receiving money in other areas or contractual, that received contractual dollars? Counsel, how do you feel about that? That may help well, our world, knowing that they are receiving money from the city in other capacities. Do we want to still factor them in? Or do we want to leave them here?
I got the impression, Ryan, correct me if I remember wrong, that we've have, over this last year, because this has been a point I raised in the past, that we have had people sitting on these decision-making bodies who also oversee other allocations, so that we did understand more broadly and holistically where dollars were going to ensure that we weren't putting, you know, all of the eggs in one basket, so to speak. Ryan, did you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's correct. We are, for example, using that, the big, the best example is that the housing ones. We have John Sales, whoever sees the, the housing pieces and sits on the CDBG and the hack and the home committees and all of those things. He came and helped with the, the review of those applications. So we're, we're looking at those. It's been more of the Vibrant Community Funds bringing in other people. And there's constant communication between ourselves and, and redevelopment, redevelopment Housing Department with Brenda Kelly and John Sales and Aaron Attack. Having those conversations and making sure that things are lining up. However, I will say we look at that as a, okay, we know they're also getting funding, and we know that there, that's more for consistency of the program of what's being told to us. It's not as much of saying, oh, well, they're getting funding in area A, so they're not going to get funding in area B. If the, you know, we looked at purely on a, if the application said they were worthy of funding, we, that was where the recommendation was, at least on our end. I'm not sure on the CDBG side or the housing dollars or the home dollars, how they have factored that in completely. I know it was, it was playing a factor in that. But yeah, there is kind, there's been, you know, since Council Hill and others had raised that, that question, we have been having more communication back and forth between the groups to make sure there's constant communication. One was, one application scored very high in one area and very low in the other, and it really came down to the, the review criteria and what was being presented and what was being, how it was being, the, the lens through which it was being reviewed. It didn't mean the program was, was different. It just meant that how it fit into that particular pot of funding was slightly differently than, than how it fit into, say, a vibrant community fund or something like that. So.
So I think we could either, what I'm thinking is, because I don't know either, so let's have two suggestions. We can either go through these 83 pages and go through every organization and see whether we want to keep it on the list or remove from the list, or we can go back to the original categories, four categories that staff gave us in whatever part of the year that was in. Fall, whenever it was. So this sheet that we got, if you all can see that, we can go back through this. There were a few organizations that we all agreed that we wanted to add, and then we can talk about funding from this list. So that's the only way that I can see. We can do this very drawn-out process where we go through all of this one by one and talk about each organization and what our thoughts are, or we can go back to the original list that staff gave us and add. I think there were three organizations that we were, Legal Aid, Farm Maybe, and Cinderella. Okay, those three.
I, I prefer the second option for efficiency. I guess the question is, I'm still a little confused because I know that both of the dollars add up to the 2.1, and I know I asked this question, I'm sorry. At one point, we were at the 2.4 level. I'm just wondering, basically to make these additions, we're going to be taking away from someone.
So, yeah, so what we, initially what we had to distribute amongst all of these agencies that we're, we're discussing was approximately 2.3 million dollars. And now we're down to that 2.1 million. So the allocations that are in that book, if we went through and added everything up, we would probably need to rework the percentages that, like, we were looking at, this group gets 95%, and then this has 60%, that's 70% or half of, however, those were distributed. So we would have to go back and relook at, at those. And I also wanted to point out, on top of what Mayor Walker made that they wanted to, to discuss more and look at adding in, there were a couple agencies specifically on, on the, the food and feeding side, that initially, in our discussions, we hadn't really talked about them much because they fell outside and it's, and the importance, they scored, the, the program scored well on the application score side of it, but on the important side, they, they had fallen down a little bit outside of the funding area. And I believe at least two of those, Kaki, you can correct me if I'm wrong, at least two of those moved in importance to an area where they would also be considered for funding now.
And what were those, just so I can highlight them in my little cheat sheet I have going here? What agencies were those?
I'm gonna look at my list just to make sure I'm being accurate. Certainly, City School Yard Garden, now identified as Cultivate Charlottesville, has taken a lead role as part of their involvement in the Food Justice Network to coordinate all the feeding programs across both Charlottesville and Almaral, related to both schools, testing initiatives, direct sort of support for the food banks. Like, they've just moved into a space of sort of like superhero status around COVID for feeding programs. Certainly, we have identified as part of the allocation that you, I requested for Human Services as part of the CARES Act, we, you all appropriated about $90,000 in support of food and feeding programs. And that money, some of that money would go to Cultivate Charlottesville. And so my list is sort of, we haven't allocated any of them directly yet, but it would be Loaves and Fishes, PB&J Fund, the food, Local Food Hub, Cultivate Charlottesville, and Meals on Wheels were the ones that I identified for a direct allocation as part of CARES Act. But other than that, the feeding programs didn't rise to the sort of level of importance based on our very first set of criteria. And so it's just something to note that of all of the, sort of looking at the COVID basic needs kinds of additional lens, those agencies are worst sort of identifying anew, as Ryan has to say. Do you all want to look at that differently based on the updates that you've received around COVID, or what we know is happening on the ground in terms of people's needs around food and around our agency response?
So Ryan, you're saying that the delta between the 2.3, whatever it was, and the 2.1 will just be a matter of adjustments, kind of on like some kind of scale, a relative adjustment to get us to that point for all agencies?
No. This is what Tisha held of that too, that difference was to be put aside for you guys to use throughout the course of the year if some other organizations came about.
Oh, we haven't even allocated those. Okay.
Part, yeah, that, that's part of it. There is seven, roughly $70,000, about 200 was basically an unallocated fund to be
Right.
determined at another time. And then the, the difference, which I guess was probably somewhere in the 130,000 range, would be a, a overall reduction in the allocations to, to those, those agencies. But we would have to, I mean, we would have to really, depending on the discussion today, sit down and look at those, those formulas and figure out what would be most amenable to, to counsel, what would be their, their preference. That's how we, we shift those.
So it just seems like whatever we decide to possibly add in, in terms of agencies, in addition to whatever has been proposed, there's going to be adjustments across the board so that we still are getting to that total amount? And so every agency that we add in, it's just going to impact all other agencies in terms of the amount that they get?
Yeah, that's what they're saying. But I think we need to also ask some questions about even on the list. So just going with the first one that's in the category of the bridge line. So Bridge Line had residential and day. And then on this list, it has, from the update, that, and so I have a question about this, that they are, everything was the same for them. So they had, they didn't have a decrease in revenues or expenses or increase, they said. But it said they were currently serving fewer people. But they projected to serve the same number of people. So I would like for us to have conversations about that data, and then even their updates. In their updates, they talked about Zoom, but I'm gonna get to it. The residential. No, this is case management. Let me get to the right one. So in the residential program, they said that that's fully operational. And that the residents have learned to use Zoom technology and programming, is using virtual programming to keep residents engaged. So that doesn't seem like there was much of a change there from what they what they had. But then some of here, I know I remember reading it. So for the first case where there was $15,000 in funding recommended, it says that the program moved to providing service virtually, which actually allowed them to increase the number served. But then on this sheet, so I'm just wondering, is this just their overall programming? So when I see something like this, I'm just thinking that if they have been able to maintain their revenues and expenses, and they were serving fewer people, and, but they projected that they would serve the same number of people before, if not more. So that may be something where we say we want to continue to fund them, but we don't fund, fund them at the amount that we originally, maybe at a lesser amount. I mean, I don't question, because it's not my expertise, but based on what has been in their applications before. Doing their work over, anyway, I'm not gonna make a, I'm not gonna make my statement. I just have some questions.
If I may, I think they lost a few folks who If I may, I think they lost a few folks who weren't getting support from them when the pandemic happened. People who didn't feel comfortable using virtual technology, which is why their current beneficiaries dropped a little bit. But they predicted that in fact they would uh, be able to, the pandemic would end and that they would. Go back to their traditional sense of providing support to clients, but without um, really engaging the executive director. I'm not sure if I could answer anymore about sort of the nuances between. The the things that are slightly lower, the things that are expected to be the same.
I'm also, we never did address, I mean, right now the CIC still oversees a loan program. And they're not receiving any money. And their demand has increased significantly.
As I recall, wasn't the CIC going to be getting money out of CDBG funds? There's a, an economic component there, I think that they were, were going to be getting.
They were one of the. Recip, I don't remember the amount.
I thought it was like ninety thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That will probably be a separate. View, they will probably view that as additional.
Was that CDBG or was that CETA dollars um, partnering with economic development or something?
Presentation.
Okay.
Also trying to remember if that would be grants only though, or if that would also cover any administrative costs on their end. Or if that's simply grants that there, it's like a pass through grant program where they get. I I just bring this up because if we're asking them to administer our loan programs for free. It it's just. If historically, yeah.
Yeah, they get them, they some administrative costs. I knew the, in terms of the minority business fund. Whatever we're supposed to call it, I forgot. But they received additional um, monies to. You know, cover, I think it was nine thousand dollars to cover the administrative costs for that program.
Okay, I just didn't see that in the budget anywhere.
But I don't know what other.
Yeah.
Okay, so you want, just by you bringing it up, I'm just gonna add that to the list of. Agencies that we would like to talk about more.
And Mayor Walker, if I may. Um, looking at your May fourth agenda. CDDBG package included fifteen thousand for CIC.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blair.
So Kaki, the. Let me just find it. It's in here already somewhere.
Mayor Walker. So CIC, um, the Community Investment Collaborations, is that who we were talking about?
Yeah.
They did um, do an economic grant for ninety eight thousand through the CDBG um, submission.
So did they only get the fifteen thousand of that? Is that what the allocation was?
I thought they got, I thought they got the whole thing because they were the only ones who submitted for that economic piece of that. I'll look and I'll get back.
Okay.
So right now, I'm just.
I just had questions. I was just going through the, through the list. So go ahead.
No, I just, I'm, I wanna, I'm just trying to structure my stuff as well. So I highlighted everything that was already recommended and then we're saying that we. The other discussion points from our last time around um, were FAR, Community Investment Collaborative. Legal Aid, and Seen Bad Adds. And then we've also just started talking about possibly food. Support like through City School Yard Garden, which obviously has been renamed, but in here it's that. And then the Local Food Hub, is that kind of where we're at right now in terms of what we're gonna be considering, or is there others?
No, those are the ones I wrote down on my list as well, which totals about two hundred and twenty eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. If you look at their requests for all of those agencies. And it's, uh, if you look at half of that, um, it's a hundred and fifteen thousand ish. Given the fact that most agencies are receiving about between fifty or forty percent and sixty percent of their original requests. And so just looking at ballpark figures for what you're considering adding. Uh, the full freight is two thirty, two twenty, uh, eight. And the, and then half of that, if you look at.
And I would um.
It was two twenty eight, seven sixty, if you look at their original requested amounts. But at this point, what's included in the sheet doesn't include anybody's fully requested amounts. So then most of them are somewhere between, I think I, uh, Ryan's been working the magic with the numbers, so I don't know what the exact percentages are. But somewhere between forty and sixty six percent of their original request, depending on which one of the buckets people ended up in. So if you just take the two hundred and twenty eight thousand and cut it in half. Then you get to fifty percent of the original request for all of those agencies. Just trying to ballpark how much you guys are trying to find potentially in among this two point three million. You're muted, Mayor Walker.
I said, I think especially with the um, legal aids and butters and FAR, that we should. Try with those three to get them as closest to their max's request as possible.
I would, I don't know if they're receiving funds from other areas, but I would at least throw out the free clinic maybe uh, for discussion. I know they're receiving more um, in their report.
Do, so. So their initial, we had two requests and um. One was for thirty five thousand dollars and one was for a hundred and five thousand dollars. One wasn't funded, um, the Integrated Medical Clinic and Pharmacy. And then the other one, the dental clinic. Was, I feel like there's another. The free clinical too. You have that?
Yeah, they fell in the, the meta, or the dental fell in the category that received approximately ninety seven percent of their, their ask.
The sixty nine three. I can't find the medical one, do I not have that? So was the medical clinic pharmacy, it must have been that one rated, that's the one we're talking about. So that was the one that was zero, it's on here though, so that can't be right.
Trying to look it up too.
I'm going off this little summary sheet that someone did. And I think I see that the two A one out of the one oh five asks, they got sixty nine three. And then the number two S was a two B and didn't receive funding, at thirty five thousand.
Oh, I get it, because they were in the important category for that one. I see it now, that's why I can't find. So though, that was one that we. Decided again. What's the status with the um, the the space? With the free clinic?
They uh, need to move out of the Health Department's space as the Health Department uh, continues to expand. I don't remember what the timeframe is for that, but I understand that they're looking at available spots in a couple of places in town right now. As options for that.
I think it is by November.
And we in the, the supervisors were, I think, open to advocating. For the, I guess it's at the, at the state level with the Health Department, that this, these decisions are even being made. To see if there was any way they can continue to maintain their dental, I mean, I think the dental clinic is in scope, but can they use those facilities in the evenings? So I wasn't really clear on where that advocacy had landed. But. Obviously, there's a number of them that fall in that to be category. It sounds like multiple, there's council interest in those to be categories. But there are a couple others that fall in different. Measures outside of to be, and I think it's important for us to determine. Especially if we're talking about funding even higher amounts for some of these, when some of the higher ranked. Applications aren't getting fully funded. I just. Want us to kind of figure out what our strategy is there. You're on, you gotta unmute, Mayor.
Still muted, Mayor Walker.
We still can't hear you.
There we go. So. Like OAR is in here quite a bit. And. They have that. They're, Kaki, do you know why they are projecting that their revenues, why would there would be lower?
I don't. It's possible that their executive director, Russ Carew, was on the line somewhere today and might be willing to answer that question. I suspect it's more related to uh, the lost opportunities around fundraising that the pandemic has. Really presented to a lot, a number of nonprofits, but I don't actually know the, the sort of. Percentage or mix of the OAR budget to know grant funding versus private dollars versus public support.
One thing I think we need to remember about OAR, at least four of these categories. I don't even think ought to be part of this process. They really ought to be part of the government. The Drug Court, the Therapeutic Docket, Probation, Pretrial Services. To even say, uh, and and these are all matters that we're, our agreement with the county basically is that we're going to provide the funds. We're gonna split the funds in some, in some way between them. And to say, we're gonna, yes, we know that our, our agreed upon share for the Drug Court is a seventy five thousand, nine hundred and forty seven dollars. But because we have a formula, we're only going to fund ninety seven percent of that. We're the same thing for the Therapeutic Docket. I mean, those are all things that are, that are in court. I mean, one of the, I think it's the, the Therapeutic Docket. They're losing money because they've got a grant that runs out at the end of September. I think that's part of why they're, they're. Looking at a decrease in some of their funding. Are the only one of these that, as far as I can tell, the only one of these that is not, you know, an actual court operation. That we kind of really can't change. The only one that's not is the reentry services, which I also think is one of the better things they've got going on right now. So um, just because we're giving them a lot of money, and one of the reasons is because we're not accurately, actually funding it. Where, uh, from a pot of money it ought to be funded from, which is a, a court budget. Rather than through the Vibrant Communities Fund.
Well, yeah, I thought we had agreements in place with some of this for OAR that we have to be funding.
I think we do.
Well, part of it is also the larger conversation that's not for us to have today, but whether we want, if we're talking about. Defund, moving to strengthen people, then we, all these categories would be topics that we would discuss in the future. Instead of making them mandatory, um, that we would be moving towards more supportive holistic services and away from criminal justice services. So that's not necessarily the conversation for today. But if that's the direction that we are truly going, then we will have to have conversations about all of those. So we wouldn't want to move them into a permanent category.
Except that I think anybody would agree that Drug Court and Therapeutic Docket are, are away from criminalization. And towards social services and human services responses to these problems.
Well, as someone who is a drug court clinician, I don't agree with that, but I'm sure that most people do. But I just think that's a larger part of the conversation that we're gonna be having over hopefully the next few months about. What do we fund and? How much do we fund? We've received a couple calls about since we have fewer people in the jails. With people now understanding that five year average, that we can immediately don't designate that money that we're saving. To other programming and the conversations I've been having is explaining to them that it just doesn't work. Like that, I mean, I guess we made it this way so we could change it, but at this moment, it's not that easy to just undo.
One of the things that I was kind of hoping we would get, and I don't have the. Personally, the information to know how to, how to process this, but to me, the, the, the issue. That requires sort of top level attention is anything that is a. You know, a sort of a crisis, life or death, sort of housing, food, medical care, kind of a, a kind of a situation. And I know it's been mentioned that uh, City School Yard Garden and Local Food Hub may be some, some food related. Groups that are doing things that we ought to be supporting. But I'm looking at the rest of these things, even some, some housing projects. And I've, I've been, of course, a, a long time fan of Piedmont Housing Alliance because of my service on their board, for example. But I'm looking at the, some of those pots of money and wondering, are those truly emergency kinds of things? And are, are they deferrable? And I, I say this not because I'm anyway biased against, but I've made up my mind. I just, I'm looking at things that seem like they are not the difference between sort of life and death. Being on the street, not being on the street right now, today. And I said a couple of months ago, I thought that our focus ought to be on things that are right now, today, kinds of crises. Even at the expense of things that are important for the long run. And there are a lot of other things, I don't mean to pick on only on them, but there's a lot of other things here that would fall into the same category. And I'm wondering if, uh, if it's appropriate for us to, to ask Ms. Dimic or other people. Who have more direct familiarity with some of these programs and their grants, to try to help us come up with some priorities.
They're like, we have done our work. I, I really do, I think we should just go through this list because until we just have a conversation about each thing, if we're gonna. To the list versus everybody who applied for something and goes back to the original. I mean, there are some things, questions that I have in, in here too, but I think that's probably the best. Way for us to do that. Because right now, we already been on here for forty eight minutes. And we are no closer to. Any answers.
So do you want to go through the list of ones that are already being proposed?
Yes, the list that we received back in the. Spring, what did we decide on this list? We decided just the essential and important. And exemplary and solid, are those the categories that we agreed on?
Actually. Where we ended up with this um, was. We funded the exemplars essential. where we ended up with this was we funded the exemplary essential at 97%. The group, the exemplary important were funded at 55%. And then the solid essential were funded at roughly 66, 67%. So we, we funded those three groups at various percentages for, for, and well, let me rephrase that. We were recommending funding for those three groups in the proposed budget.
I think it's just probably because the local food hub, the city schoolyard gardens, legal aid, they were all in helpful.
Right.
You know, the helpful category and
And I think one of the things that came up in the work session was that the particularly Sinberreras, Legal Aid and FAR, had there been, had equity been one of the five factors, then they would have risen to the top no matter what. And so because they weren't one of the sort of five identified factors, they rose to, they didn't rise to the top. But there was pretty widespread agreement, as I recall from council, that equity wasn't intended, if not stated criteria. And so those three agencies certainly, I don't recall there being any dissent among you all in terms of thinking about that. The issue is then, as you all have already noted, what happens if you add agencies? How do you subtract and from whom and to get there?
So I support adding them to the top category for the top funding stream. Maybe that's just helpful for us to say. And there's some, like the Bridgeline Day Program, council, if you all could look at that, is there any interest there to just eliminating that from that category? And then they would still receive funding from two of the programs, the Bridgeline Case Management and the Bridgeline Residential?
Yes. Yes.
No, I'm on, nevermind. Trying to unmute myself.
The one, the, the legal aid one was a 3C though, Khaki, so.
Again, there were no bad applications. So we were really trying to make the distinction between really important and just okay important. So we, it's not like there were any applications that sort of fell into like, like Sinberreras fell into a 4C, I think. But there's no, there was nobody who read their application or their process or understands who they are, that thinks that they don't, they aren't worthy of funding or don't provide a critical service in the community. We're forced to make these distinctions and categories that if equity had been a part of one of those priorities, they would have just all of those agencies immediately risen to the top of the pool.
Hopefully, yeah, moving forward, that's where we're, we're going to make sure that we put that in there. All right.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Walker? I did a little more research and CIC is recommended to receive 98,000 more. It's coming before council on August 3rd. It's a part of the 246,000 CD, CDBG, CB cares act. So that'll be before you guys on August 3rd.
For additional 98.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, is most of that supposed to be for loans going directly or grants going directly into the community?
Or yes, they're, they're requesting that money to do $3,000 grants to various businesses in the community.
And I wonder if that takes care of what the the comments before.
And one more point of clarification that may further help with this is I reached out to Chris Engel and Jason Ness in Economic Development and asked if CIC was getting any funding through them. They confirmed that they are getting some funding, but I, I'm still waiting to hear back as to how much and what the, and if it's administrative or if it's just funneling grants through them, or if they're just kind of like the, the grant arm. So I'm not sure on that, but I, I believe they do funnel some grants for economic development. But I, I need to get more clarification. I'm, I've reached out to Chris Engel and, and Jason on this, but they're not sitting at their desks at the moment. So it's hard to, to, to get back. So but they'll, they'll respond as soon as I get that information, I can share that.
Okay. All right, so. And then the local food hub. And I guess we could just start with the ones that we're adding to, to just know what we would potentially be working with. So you're saying local food hub, CSG, urban agriculture. And is that it?
So what has, I identified city schoolyard garden and local food hub. And CIC, of course, you've already discussed. And then council member Payne brought up the free clinic healthcare program that didn't rise to that level pre-COVID, but after COVID, thinking about sort of our category of basic needs, including housing, feeding programs and healthcare. If we're going to redo it with those sets of priorities, we would find that program included in that pool.
Okay, so they're going to move over. Or does anyone not agree with that?
Not agree with what? With?
With moving those local food hubs, city schoolyard garden. Cultivate Seaville was one, are they the same thing?
Yeah, they just changed names.
Okay. So all of that over into the, the people who are now providing food during the pandemic.
So are we talking about, there, there are two applications for the city schoolyard garden and one for the local food hub. Are we talking about moving, which category are we talking about moving them into?
So I think we, this is what we're talking about, that they would rise automatically to the top of the list, right?
To a 1A category and get 97%?
I think that's where we are. And we can even, and all in a category, then talk about whether they should be the
I think we should put them in a category of that we're going to consider them. I'm not so sure I'm ready to go all the way.
Okay.
And, and as a, a point of clarity, when we were, as we were looking at these, the, as far as moving them, the in the application side, as far as like exemplary, solid, fair, I don't think, you know, staff really looked at any, any changes to that area. What we really were looking at were changes of where they might fall on that important scale as to the, the need for the service. So, you know, moving them into the, the, the essential category, I, I think is what, you know, staff was in, in agreement with, with that. I'm not sure we were quite there as moving them all the way up into that, that exemplary essential, essential based on, you know, previous application, but moving them to the essential, which would put them, you know, in that essential, solid category.
Which is 66%, right?
Well, yeah, that would put, well, depending on how much, I mean, we were moving in and out, it may be more or less depending on what we look at. But so that would be one thing I would recommend when we're looking at those. So to really focus on the, the essentialness of, of the, the programs as opposed to the, the application score. Because even though it may have changed, it's
So, so using, using the rubric we've got here, we would be saying that those agencies would have the, the alphabet part, the ABC part moved up from C to B or C to A.
Right, with the exception of Sinberreras, and there was one other, because if we use the equity lens, that would then also boost the application score, because when we, we looked at that piece of it, that would have added in more points into the, the actual application. So then I believe those were the two. And maybe FAR internship, that I believe those are the ones that would move up in the application side because of that, that equity lens, looking at, at that, that lens. So I know it's can be difficult to follow. But
Yeah, no, and I, I agree with that whatever the, we may change the percentage, but moving them to that top category probably should be a direction that we should strongly consider.
Sure.
Okay. Next on the list was the Women Initiative, and they are saying they are doing the same thing across the board. They have all their services, including call-in clinic, individual counseling, therapeutic groups are now telehealth capacity. And according to the summary and response, they planned on continuing telehealth for the foreseeable future. And they haven't had a decrease in clients served during the time. So are you all comfortable with keeping them where they are?
I'm comfortable with that. And again, I mean, I guess with every, all these things, you know, you can make a case for why it's essential. But I do think with the situation of COVID, that we're going to see definitely an increased need for mental health services and increased cases of domestic abuse. And I do think it's important funding it in that context.
Yeah.
I read an article just a couple of days ago that said, at least so far, the predicted increase in domestic abuse cases doesn't seem to be materializing. But whether that's just a reporting problem or what, I don't know.
Okay, so we're going to there for the, that one. So next we have the free clinic dental, and then we have free clinic medical. And so we want to keep them where they are. Yes. Or we are asking to move them because they are in the solid, essential and solid important. So is the agreement to keep them there or do we want to move them up to the next, they are one below the highest category?
So that would be 35,000 additional for the medical?
What I think that we, part of the, especially with the mood and stability there, that we probably should keep them where they are. But we also know that people, especially the medical portion, or we could, but you're not healthy if you don't receive dental care. I don't know. It's just, you need it.
I mean, I would, my preference would be at a minimum, keeping the funding that is already allocated for the dental clinic and then trying to provide money for the integrated medical services slash pharmacy, which is at $0 unless you're referring to
Hold on, so they said that, so they've had more people with medical and the dental has remained the same. But they have lower projected revenues, current revenues and projected revenues. So even if the clients remain the same, they are saying that they may not be able to serve because those are lower. But the revenues are, for the medical, they are projecting a decrease. So we, you're saying to increase them there?
I'm, I'm just in
On them to begin with. They were zero, so they would need to be
That, but I'm saying now we are having this conversation because we moved them into the other category, right?
Right, so so what category would that be though? I'm, I'm just asking what the funding level would be on that one then?
Same as a solid essential?
So they were rating level 2B before. And so that would bring them up to a 2A?
Yeah.
Um, so then what would that?
66%, 60, right now, that might all be just
67%.
Yeah.
67% of 35,000 then?
Of 30, yeah. 66% of 35,000.
Right.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that's what I meant, if that's not what I said. Which would be a little, what about 23,000 maybe? Rough guess, math?
Well, I think if we're having the conversation and we're just saying yes and which category, then Ryan, they they tell us the number and they can tell us when we have to reduce or increase something. Hold on.
I just want to make sure I know what I'm agreeing to, that's all.
No, I know, and that's what, so so the, what we're saying right now is that we'll move the free clinic medical into the same category as free clinic dental.
Right.
Or is going to take money from somewhere? Or we're going to have, at the end of this, say no or less, or change the percentage?
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
So next we have the on our own, the RAP program. And I have a question, so on our own operations was not funded. Right? Our own has said, is somebody saying something?
They, they weren't funded.
Yeah, so they are saying that they have more revenues, projected revenues, that their expenses are the same, that the projected expenses will be higher and they are serving more people. So and based on who they serve, I am interested in also trying to figure out how to serve, help them, serve them more. Let me look at their summary again. Let me see what this says, if this helps us in This is much easier to do when we're all together, I just say that.
They also had a 2B, so we could take a similar philosophy as we just have with putting them in the solid essential category.
I'm interested in what, how are they handling RAP during this time? Because will they be able to, that's what I'm going back to look at.
I don't know, I can call Cindy.
I believe Aaron Tucker is on the line, listening in, if you wanted to ask her a question.
Yeah, Brian, could you bring her in so we could just chat real quick?
Aaron Tucker, you're on with city council, can you hear us?
I can, thank you, mayor. Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Okay. So we, unfortunately, right now, we are not, are not doing RAP on Zoom, but we are doing all of the other groups. We're doing peer support every day, we're doing anxiety, we're doing assertiveness. We haven't been able to translate RAP yet, but, but that's our plan. We started in order to make sure that there was equity for every member. We went ahead and purchased Chromebooks for all of our members and internet for all of our members that can't get online. So we just recently gave out 15 Chromebooks and we're also purchasing cell phones for folks who may not have a place to access internet. So I would ask that if it's any way possible to be funded for our actual programming, that would be fantastic. And the RAP piece, we will start exploring, but it's really hard to do it on Zoom.
So you're talking about the on our own
Yes, mayor.
And that was at $20,000, Khaki, the original request?
Yes, $20,000 was the original request.
All right, so I would support moving them into that one, is that 1A category?
It would be a 2A. Because they were at 2B before.
Yeah, but I think we should probably even move them.
I thought that Ryan was saying that the one, the application measures, we should probably hold steady and move based on essential versus non-essential. based on essential versus non-essential. Yeah. Did I capture that right, Ryan?
Yeah, in, in most cases.
To the equity ones, because I, I've lost track about that.
But I think if you, who on our own serves, then we are back to the equity conversation, no?
Okay, true of a lot of these.
I mean, the solid two, how much of this are we holding on to? Are we still holding on to that two hundred, or is that looking like it's gone?
It's gone because we don't have the two hundred anymore, because we went back to fiscal year twenty.
That's right. I remember. Okay. All right, so they're gonna go in two B. All right.
Well, they are in two B, so I think we're saying one B, A.
Nothing going to two, two.
So solid essential.
Right, solid essential. That's how I'm talking.
Yes. Let's use more. All right, thank you, Erin. Thanks, Brian.
Solid essential, which would be two A, correct? Okay.
All right. Next we have, and so we're not going, we're removing RAP and adding the on our own operations. Okay.
Wait, what did you say about the rap?
Removing rap at this time.
Okay.
And that, instead, funding the operations, not rap, so it gives them more flexibility.
How much is that, Ryan? The RAP program was the on our own operation.
Oh, it was operation. Twenty thousand.
Versus twelve thousand for rap, so it's another eight thousand.
But they were only, so. Twenty thousand would be the whole, because it's in that sixty-six percent category.
Right.
Fairly close. All right. So next we have the, next set, which is OAR. Right, I'm not missing anything from that top bracket, am I? No, okay.
I'm not looking at that thing, I.
Okay, so we have OAR, um, which is local probation, re-entry, therapeutic, drug court and pre-trial. So the courts are open back up now.
And they've continued doing drug court, I think, or mental hea, and maybe it was the mental health docket, they continue doing and meeting with people one-on-one as much as possible, as I recall.
Drug court, but not as it, obviously not as effectively when they're having to do it via Zoom. I've had a couple of clients who have had real problems dealing with just having the degree of responsibility necessary to, to keep track of themselves when they don't have a probation officer type person who can kind of reach out and grab them and have, have weekly contact with them. So I know they've been trying, I know they've been having some problems with it.
And also some of the type of things that I think that we could encourage. If you have places like on our own Women Initiative, who don't have that punitive type of, you know, connection, that people may seek out and get the type of help, this is what we're talking about with the reimagining conversations, which I know is not a topic for today, but I do feel the need to bring it up. Because then we would give more money to those services who may can serve them at this time. You know, people are more likely to log in if, like what Erin just said, we've given you Chromebooks, we've given you internet, you have what you would not have. I don't know if, and maybe we can ask, because I think that would be helpful for me to hear from OAR.
I think, I believe they're on the line right now. Ross Carew is on the line.
It's council, is that fine?
I would love to hear from him.
Absolutely. That's fun.
Brian?
Yep. Ross, you're on the city council, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yep, you might have to speak up just a little.
Thank you very much. Thanks for letting me speak. So specifically, as a result of COVID, we obviously have struggled with the face-to-face contact. However, all of our programs are continuing to operate as they have been, other than the face-to-face contact, we've been using Zoom, we've been doing, we've switched our urine screens over to oral swabs, and we do those in the parking lot face-to-face. All of the dockets are currently running right now. We've actually been able to have courts and graduations via Zoom. So we have tried our best to adapt as well as possible. Our staff are still having contact with all of our clients, either by phone or by Zoom, as much as daily, depending on what their risk level is and what program they're in. The only thing that we've been prohibited from doing is going into pre-trial and doing face-to-face interviews in the, in the cell blocks, we're doing them behind glass, but we're still doing pre-trial risk assessments and providing that information to court for bond recommendations.
Okay. And the only question I have is that here it says that as you either were or are serving fewer people, but plan for your projected beneficiaries are the same, could you just talk a little bit about that?
Sure, absolutely. Um, with the court slowdown, basically, what's happened is, is the cases have just been stacked up. And then once the court opens up fully, that things will catch back up within the next fiscal year.
All right. Any other questions, council? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, um, based on what he said, it seems like that they will still need, even if they are serving fewer people right now, they will need all of the funding in the future? So.
Yes.
Leaving them where they are?
I'm in favor of that.
I am as well. Nakai, I have a few versions of what, you, you have that one that's just a one-page summary. I have that deck that has it for every category. Where, what was that one from? What day?
I don't remember. I hope it's the right one, since we are.
I just have the one from the March work session, which was before COVID, but it has it broken out by every category versus in one sheet. And I'm just scrolling through, which is happening, but I'm just, I was trying to look at what you were looking at.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know, I just had the printed version in a folder, so I just pulled it out. I can never find, as Brian will tell you, anything online, so I need extra assistance. So I just put my stuff up. Old style, school style. All right, so if that's where we are, I would, just based on peaking in COVID and long-term, you know, what that might mean if the money isn't used this year, I mean, that's a question that I am going to have next year. If, you know, the courts remain closed longer and plans were not able to be served, and we are on, you know, phase common sense, then we will ask questions about, like, you know, how this money will be rolled over into next fiscal year. Because I, without us knowing what our revenues will be this year, we may not even be able to have as much money to allocate in the future. And so I just hope people just hold on to that thought. Okay, so shelter for help in emergencies, right, that's where we are. They are, their revenues are the same. They have modified and increased operations, their projected revenues are lower, their expenses are higher. Um, projected expenses are higher and beneficiaries, current and projected, are the same. Let's get to them, they are on page eighty-two.
I think it's page sixty-four.
Okay. This is eighty-two, sixty-four, let's get to that. Yeah, there they are. So, what do they say? Um, all volunteer operations were council-requiring. All support services are virtual. There have been an increase in their calls to the twenty-four-hour hotline, and outreach services will respond to circumstances and reopening of partners such as courts and social services. So that's outreach and community services. And then residential and client services, they are saying the shelters move to housing new residential clients and hotels to guard against the risk of bringing illness into residential facility. The clients, they are being provided food and basic living resources. And they will modify services based on state guidelines. And future services will remain as stated in the original application. So based on what they are saying, it looks like that we should, Kaki, do, do you know why their projected revenues are lower, and how much lower?
I don't, I can only assume it's because of the
Fundraising.
impact of fundraising. And I recognize that their budget has a significant proportion of fundraising naturally in it. And I, I don't know if they were able to take advantage of the PPE, the PPP program or not, or, and how that might also affect their revenues going forward. I do know that they, they have been really very responsive to both taking care of folks in shelter and also making sure that anyone, if anyone new comes to shelter, that can't be quarantined appropriately, that they get moved to a safe spot elsewhere without requesting for additional funding through T-Jack. They've taken that additional cost on themselves.
Okay. All right, so what are the thoughts there to keep them where they are?
I think so, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Constantly in need, they've been constantly in need for years. Even if we can somehow manage our, you know, to bring homelessness down in the area, domestic violence, regretfully rarely ever goes less.
Okay, so I supported Michael Lloyd, you're good to go with that?
I'm okay with it.
All right, so next, so L, legal aid, civil and legal aid equity, are we moving them both to the one A category? Or are we just moving the equity?
If we're using the metrics that we're putting out there, it would just be the equity.
Okay.
Much as I love legal aid, and believe me, I do, I just.
So what are we actually moving to? What, the advocacy on racial equity, moving up to what?
The legal aid equity, which was in the helpful category. Justice and help fair quality, helpful. So three C, I guess, we're moving that up to one A.
That's quite a jump. Man, I understand, uh, on, on one metric, deciding that it goes from three to one, I guess, based on, i- is that the one that's based on, on equity concerns?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah.
And do we have a principled reason for saying that it moves from three to one, other than just we like it? Because three to one, the fair is seventy, seventy-nine points, are we saying that if there had been some equity measure, it would have added twenty more points?
Yes.
Do we have a basis for saying that?
If it had been, if equity had been identified as one of the five priority areas, it surely would have made that big of a difference, and it's boring.
So right now, I, I, help me out with, with how the, the things were being scored on zero to one hundred points. What was the measure of, I mean, what was being measured and how many points did they each get?
So it, there's a combination of factors. One of them is how the program meets with the, that, that goal. Um, and, and as we said, if we put in equity, that could have changed that scoring. The other one, where they would potentially receive, and it's hard to say without having reviewed a, a full application under the, this lens, but that being said, there's also a big portion of the score that deals with outcomes and projected outcomes and those kind of things. And that's another area where I could have, where I can imagine they would have received additional points, when you're looking at equity, outcomes under that equity lens, that makes a difference in how you view those projected outcomes, any outcomes they had shown from the past and be able to look at those. So those are two areas off the top of my head. It's changed. I, can I put an exact point value on it? No, I cannot, not without doing a full review. But the, I would be comfortable in saying those two areas would have received some.
But we have, one measure we're doing is based on the application itself, and one is based on how well it matches up with our priorities. So I definitely see that we, we consider our priorities, and certainly equity is a top priority, that that moves one of the needles. But I'm struggling with the other.
Yeah, so, and I think we also need to look at the time we're in and the potential spread of inequity, inequality during this time. And so you have in their application that they will be working with the Public Housing Association of Residents, Shawsville Income Housing Coalition, the People's Coalition, the Shawsville Area Immigrant Resources and Advocacy Coalition, Parents and Students Concerns About Racial Equity in Schools, Community Members Concerns About Issues Such As UVA's Destructive Billing Collection Practices, Racial Inequities and Falsified Care System, I can bet from some of the issues that people have had across the country, and hopefully it won't happen here, but we can't be naive to the access to medical care. Who gets admitted to ICU, who receives treatment, access for family members, I mean, who are people going to call when that stuff, you know, arise, and even access to schools? And resources, I know everybody's trying to do their best. So I acknowledge that, but there needs to be people who are working on bringing those issues to the forefront that people trust. So that is the work that people like FAR, the People's Coalition, this is why Simba Ress has risen to that top tier, and then the lawyers to assist them with that type of work, that's more of a full package. So that's my thoughts on it. So I would support moving them to that top category.
But just to be clear, I don't think that money is intended to go for the lawyers. It's intended for outreach, community advocacy, it's not intended for lawyers.
So I think, I think it's intended to support legal aid's capacity to provide both legal advice and also organizing and outreach support to all of these community-based organizations where people are doing their own organizing and their own advocacy, they're, each one of them independently is looking to legal aid for both legal support and functional support. And this is, I think, a request that acknowledges that, that those requests are now beyond their capacity to just continue to provide without some additional support from outside.
And even if you look at the People's Coalition work last year, the lawyers showed up with them when it was time to come to council meetings, they were helping them with, you know, to make sure that they understand. When it was time to come to council meetings, they were helping them with, you know, to make sure that they understand, understood. You know, what the, whatever the legal interests were and that they helped make sure that they had someone there to challenge even our attorney. And challenge us. I think I said that at the last meeting. It's just important for us to acknowledge that. You know, where people are going when they need, need help.
Well, and I'm, I am not opposed to legal aid. Certainly, I contribute my own money to legal aid as well. But what, what, the only thing that I'm, I'd like to point out here is that. We had a process that we put everybody through that was intended to be principled, that was intended to be objective. And they concluded for whatever reason that this was a three C project. If we're going to change equity, add equity in there somehow to, without any real indication. Nobody has been able to explain how it would rate, rate from, go from a three to a one, but let's assume that it does. It still doesn't get it from a C to a B or an A. And I guess the question is, if, if we're just gonna go ahead and say, yeah, I know we had that process, but we're doing away with it when it comes to legal aid because we like legal aid. Then let's be honest about it. That's what we're doing.
Well, that's not what we said. Lloyd, we all, we, I think it was talking about valuing the services. At least that's my standpoint and understanding that that's a category that we even talked about. If you remember our meetings, we were. Having the discussion about how this was just the beginning of this process. And we had staff taking notes for how we could do this better. Because this was just phase one of kind of tweaking what was ABRT to become the vibrant community one. And so we didn't even get through year one of that because we ended up where we are today, where we're reevaluating it all. But out of even those initial meetings, we talked about legal aid. And looking at everything in equity lens and having that, it was racial justice category was what we said we would call it. If we had a racial justice category, then they would. Rise to the top there. And, and. So when you're talking about an example, the People's Coalition, they are housed at. So legal aid is the employer of Harold Foley, who runs that group. So Harold is able to get the legal consultation that he needs based on and to be able to do the work that they do. I think it's, I, I support it. I guess we can go around and just say whether we support it in the. One A or one B category and that we can just stop having the discussion so we can move on. So I support the one A category. Which would. So it's either the one A or two A. Is what we are moving this into, that we're deciding now.
Okay, hold, so it go, okay, so A, it goes into A because of the equity component, correct? It goes from a C to an A because of the equity component and how we are remeasuring.
We would.
Or that we're adding that poss, prospect. Now, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand. This is not.
Yeah.
Now I'm trying to understand how it goes from a three to a one. And this, this does have to do with me not fully understanding how the metrics were scored the first time. I mean, trying to, but not quite. So. How?
And that range is based on the application quality is what I was getting at earlier.
Right? But it's application quality to our needs, I thought. Could somebody explain to me the numerical rating part?
Can I just do it philosophically? So the first category was importance. So regardless of the quality of the application. So we've historically gotten feedback that we overrated application. Style points essentially. You're like, if you had access to a grant writer, you would do better regardless of the kinds of services you were offering. And so this was a way to mitigate that effect. So we evaluated based on the importance of the service being provided to meet the five goals that council had identified. So that's one set of scores. And the other set of scores is a more traditional review of the application itself. Based on individual criteria with embedded in that process. And so the two of them got combined to create this one A to B kind of combination. And none of them had, with the exception of capacity building evaluate, the evaluation where we did intentionally prioritize equity. Equity by itself was not embedded as a priority that would get, lead us to either. Additional individual scoring within the quality of the application or the, their capacity to meet the overall larger goal identified by council. And so if you had it, have a score or an application that has equity embedded in it or its primary focus is equity, you would see scores on both sides go up. But most notably on the importance scale.
Okay. Thank you. That, that helped me very much in kind of understanding. Things right now. Thank you.
So given that, I'm comfortable with the importance being raised to the top, but moving one level up for the application.
So you are a two A?
Right.
Okay.
I also think I'm in the two A category based on that excellent, based on understanding that.
Okay. Michael Lloyd?
I'm fine with us moving it to two A to consider, but I'll throw out. You know, in the pre-COVID world, you know, I advocated for this to get funded. There's two of them. There's the direct, one, the direct legal services to. The community advocacy and organizing piece. And I advocated in the pre-COVID world for that advocacy piece to get funded. I'm fine for us to move it to two A to consider, but what I'm thinking is. You know, this was sent in an earlier email, but in the COVID world, like the top priorities are like. Shelter, food, direct emergency assistance. And then second below that, some of direct services, mental health. And we've already added in more expenditures than we had. So. What I find tough is, you know, I'm fine with us considering it, but as we have to, we're gonna have to put things on the chopping block and. I may find it hard to say. Let's fund the community advocacy over, say. The free clinic or the local food hub providing people with food who are. Facing food insecurity or on our own, etc. So I'm fine for us to consider it, but as we move on to this, we're gonna have to decide what things are on the chopping block. That's something I'm definitely thinking about.
Okay.
I see, I see that perspective too.
And, and that's, that's kind of where I'm coming, where I'm coming from, that I, I said at the beginning of this, that I really thought our focus, that we needed to be focusing on direct services and crisis services. And that there are a number of things that are longer term horizon kinds of things that may be perfectly good projects and perfectly good endeavors that may not. Rise to the top when it comes to emergency needs. So I.
Yeah.
To the extent that I can, Michael, I would do so if that means we're calling it two A for the moment, but let's not be too committed to it. Again, I, I'm, I'm looking at this wondering how many other hundreds of thousands of dollars are we gonna wanna be adding? And where are we gonna have to cut if we're gonna have to cut?
Yeah, and I mean, I think this is our whole discussion, you know, obviously, the, the advocacy is extremely important, but. It's, it's difficult if we, as I, I think we will when we get to the chopping block part of the conversation. How do we value that over providing someone with food or emergency healthcare, etc?
But even with that piece, you're talking about advocacy around evictions and that the government has given absolutely no money. To keep people in their homes. I mean, I know there's this fifty million dollars. We don't know how much we, do we know how much we're gonna get of that? Oh, we did?
Two point two million for the district, the planning district.
Okay. So again, when people are faced with evictions and having to process that out, they'll have the, that's an immediate need and not a long term. That is something that people will need to be stable to work on the entire, throughout this pandemic.
And believe me, I, I, I get it. And there's the funding for the legal services and that still doesn't cover everything. But, you know, we'll get to this conversation later once you go through all this, but there's just a very limited amount of money.
Understand. Okay, so we are moving them to the two A. Category based on that. Next, we have Sarah. So they are saying across the board, their current revenues are lower. But they projected revenues will be the same and everything else across the board will be the same. Expenses and people that they are serving. And then in here, on page.
I'm just, I'm looking at my little summary of the monies. This was one that adjusted from what it was before, actually down. Like in terms of funding?
There, there had been a mistake, I think, in, in the first version.
Oh, okay.
And so it was having, we're having to add in. Money that. We recognized during the meeting in February, whenever it was, that it was erroneously left out.
So it is the twenty-three thousand?
Twenty-three, one, yeah.
Yeah.
For, no, for Sarah, they are.
Sarah was initially recommended at the twenty-three thousand one hundred.
Twenty-three, one. That was their percentage out of thirty-five.
But it's zero now in the updated June.
But I think that's what we said was a mistake, right? That was a mistake.
Yeah, it's supposed to be twenty-three thousand one hundred.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, and the film fund, are they receiving funding or are they not receiving funding? Thirty.
I think there must, I think theirs was also a mistake on their rating, as I recall.
So two B in there and they don't have funding.
No funding, okay. And it was just here, okay. Alright, so next page, right? We got everything from the justice category too. So now we're at housing. And. The Haven. Is first and they're exemplary essential. And so. Based on everything we said, they would remain the same because they are meeting the current needs during the pandemic, correct?
Right.
Yes.
So next, we have Habitat. And Habitat is saying. That. They have lower current revenues, lower projected revenues, the same expenses, and they are serving more people.
My only concern about Habitat is that I don't know that they would qualify under the notion of sort of crisis services.
Yeah, I'm getting to the page to see what he said. So with the exception of construction activities by Habitat staff, all other activities are being provided remotely. Habitat successfully expedited the completion of near finished homes. They have expanded financial coaching and support services, including food distribution, youth support, applying for benefits and foreclosure prevention. And. Their construction productivity and timelines have been minimally impacted, but costs have increased due to the use of subcontractors instead of volunteers. And there will be phased reopening of volunteer opportunities. They plan to reopen in-person services by mid-July, which may be problematic based on the numbers that are increasing. Across the country in here. And they implemented proactive strategies to address short and long-term stability. Focusing on immediate crisis needs of families, helping people regain stability and access to services and benefits and support of long-term financial help. I'm interested, is Dan. Brian, is he on here?
Mayor Walker, who are you looking for?
Habitat, Dan from Habitat?
I do not see Dan Rosenzweig.
Okay.
If, if somebody else from Habitat's on the call and wants to click the raise hand icon?
So I just, I have questions about what, because if we are given money for. Like the food initiatives that are. You know, feeding both the city county at this time, then I would be hesitant to. If the more, serving more people is coming from those activities. We're already funding someone that we're seeing, you know, the collective that we're seeing is doing that community-wide. At this point. And I've used them, you know, and had the conversations with them. So they are pretty much, if you ask, they're trying to fulfill the need. So that could maybe be a partnership, but I don't know if that's where the increase coming, it's how much of the increase is coming from there? Are there any other thoughts? So is that the? Ninety-seven percent of the fifty thousand, is that where we are?
Yes, ninety-seven percent of the fifty-two, five hundred, I believe it was.
Also, we went back to the, I didn't realize that we had done that either, or maybe I did and I just forgot. But I thought we were getting the percentages from the city manager proposed funding. Versus the requested funding. So that may be something that we can do to help with the numbers here. No?
So the percentages, the, the funding that is.
Oh, there are ninety. I get it. I was thinking lower. So never mind.
Okay.
It works sometime.
Okay. Just for council's knowledge, as we were going through, I'm keeping a track of. What agencies we're saying we're going to add, what category they're gonna fall into. And at the end, Brian, we were set up so I could share my screen and show council. What changes we've made to make sure everyone, that I didn't misrepresent something. And then if we. Need to, I can, obviously I will have to go back and rework some numbers and, and come back and probably come back to council because I don't wanna make sure that we're getting these right. I don't feel comfortable doing it on the, on the fly. So just to let you guys know, we are keeping track of that, that we can share at the end.
So how do you all feel about? First question, I guess, is, is you want Habitat to remain in that one A category? If not, are you proposing that they move into the two A for this request? Because they are receiving city funds from other places too.
Well, this year the CAF, they did not, which they normally would have. And next year.
So their application description was Habitat's homeownership program is wrapped around financial empowerment. Programs that partners with very low-income families to help them attain financial stability and homeownership. It provides outreach-based supports for long-term success, including intensive one-on-one financial coaching. Homebuyer education, employment counseling, housing navigation support and connection with other resources.
So far, this is the only we're seeing so far that is also addressing what, one of the things that we're really concerned about, which is foreclosure prevention.
I have a hard time with all of these that are in this category for housing, given where we are with housing, making any drastic changes.
So let's. Okay, well, when the, I think we are going to have a deeper conversation just based on the, what they put in the comments here about. You know. COVID-related, increased. The lack of volunteers. And using subcontractors because of that, that's probably going to be costly long-term. So it's just something to keep in mind. When we're having. The future conversations. So PHA, how, so PHA is in the. Capacity building and here twice, is that?
They have two programs, yeah. Housing Opportunity Services and Affordable Housing Management and Development.
I think they only have one capacity building request, so two requests in the traditional operation.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
One.
That's what I meant, in the traditional format.
Um, let's see. So. PHA has worked with partners for their, their first application to secure food for 350 tenants aged 55 plus. PHA has significantly increased resident services, maintenance routine, have focused on emergency and cleaning. They plan to maintain services and there will be a stronger emphasis on eviction prevention for them for the first one. And then the second one, the housing opportunity, they continue offering housing counseling and education using remote technology. PHA is working with a coalition of deeply committed nonprofit service provider with expertise in housing and financial counseling workforce. Is this what we funded, the 75,000? Was that? Two years ago, I think? Was this the start of that? No? No, okay. Their partners are United Way, CRHA, MACA, RRC, CIC Network to Work. And they are hoping to create a financial opportunity center. So is there consensus that they are staying? Okay, and FAR redevelopment?
Yep.
Want me to read it, or you have to?
No, I, I support that one.
They're staying, okay. So next we have Pacham Shelter, and I know. That's another one. We have been pretty consistent. And AHEP is next. Well, that was my question. I did have a question. So Pacham, are we saying. That we want to increase them, or they are staying the same? I really think, and something I just want to throw out there. First of all, if we're supporting food, we're saying we're increasing all of these coalitions that can feed anyone. Then, one thing that has been consistent is we have been duplicating services across the board for a long time within organizations. So that's just something to be thoughtful of. The, like. The management. Fiscal health, those type of, and remote opportunities. I'm interested in just the question with. We know that some people have struggled. I have seen tons of people on Facebook talking about even trying to connect their kids to school. And we have to understand the environment we in, if people even have the space. That they can absorb this type of information at this time. I don't have the answers to that. Maybe they can, but it's just something to keep in mind. But. It may even be. Worth because they, I need to, I don't remember what FAR is saying that they are doing, so I need to go back to that. Before I finish my statement. Hold on just a second. So like the PHA, if they're saying that three meals for 55 residents. Like who did they contract with to provide those meals? And are we supporting that twice? And I don't know if that's something that needs to happen. And I don't know if that's going to happen, but I'm just thinking, thinking about that.
If Sunshine's in the participants, we might want to ask him.
Yeah, Sunshine, you want to come on and talk to us?
While we're waiting for Sunshine, I would just suggest that the need around emergency food programs based on unemployment, and based on the economy.
But not meeting it.
We're not meeting the need. So it's hard for me to imagine actual duplication of feeding efforts or housing efforts in this current climate.
Yeah, and I know that, but my thought is if that group that has come together as a collective, are they able to feed people at a lower cost? Than doing it individually, is that should be a suggestion? That is my only thought with that. I understand that we are not going to be able to meet the whole need. Hi, Sunshine.
Hey there, how are you doing?
Pretty good, how are you?
Hanging in there. So to respond to the question specifically about food. It's a, it's a complex answer, as we all know, the, the. Folks, the organizations and supports that are supporting low-income families through food support. Are broad. So we, we have partnered with Cultivate Charlottesville. We have partnered with the Food Bank. We have partnered with local restaurants who have donated. Food periodically. We have partnered with an individual donor who has helped us buy. Meals from other restaurants to support local businesses, but also get food to our residents. And we also ourselves pay directly for ongoing hot meals at Friendship Court specifically. Primarily focused on the children. That's a program we've been running for the last few years. Which is, is generally unfunded and we just have to fundraise for that separately.
Fundraise, okay. Feel like you're able to tap into kind of the cost savings, if there are any that like the. The groups are creating with the larger programs. Are they some of your partners?
Yeah, I'm not really sure exactly what you're referring to. I mean, the food that we have typically been distributing has been arriving to us free. So either through the Food Bank or through other partner agencies or through simple donations.
Okay.
Where we are, for example, providing food directly to Friendship Court residents that go beyond that and are really part of our ongoing program, not COVID response. That is partnering with just a local. Black-owned business that we have worked with for the last couple of years.
And that's where this is coming in to play at.
Yeah, and, and to be honest, that, you know, that, the, the funding that we're asking for is, is broad, you know, I mean, that's a very small portion of it, honestly.
Yeah, no, I just had a question because I was just trying to connect the dots.
Sure.
Sure that we're not running out.
Yeah.
Because we're going to get to that discussion in just a few. Does anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, just. In some more detail for us, what does. The Housing Opportunity Services, as well as the Affordable Housing Management and Development Services, the two different applications. What, what do those programs just look like on the ground at, at the moment?
So in terms of community management and property management, it continues to be. A difficult line to walk, to, to ensure that we're providing the services that our residents need while also ensuring their safety and the safety of our staff. And in fact, we just came out of a, a small, fortunately. Unfounded scare where we thought about half of our staff were potentially exposed to COVID. Unfortunately, the test came back negative. So. But for the last week, we, most of our staff have been in self-quarantine and we've been trying to work with temps and so forth to continue services. You know, those staff, and this is not funding that we've asked for from the city, but just to be clear, our, the, our frontline staff. Who really are, you know, on, on a very real level of putting their own lives at risk to continue to provide services. We have internally, out of our own reserves, decided to implement a hazard pay bonus for those staff during this period. Because we, we can see on a daily basis the additional stress that comes to them. And they may have challenges in their own family circumstances that require them to balance budgets that they, you know, are outside the norm. So it's, it's been hard to, you know, there's no other way to, to say it. But at the same time, I think we have done an extraordinary job as well. Not perfect by any stretch. None of this is perfect. The, and then as far as the housing counseling, financial counseling. It actually has been a relatively smooth transition to virtual. You know, it's pretty, pretty straightforward to. Transition over to DocuSign and virtual services to main, make sure we're still serving clients and doing down payment assistance and all of those sorts of things. I will say that I heard in the, in the dialogue earlier, there was reference to the Financial Opportunity Center, and I'll just, just a very quick snapshot there. We are looking to partner with Piedmont Housing as the lead entity, but as a true partnership with all those nonprofits mentioned. To develop a long-term model of a centralized resource for financial counseling, employment counseling. Benefits counseling in a single location, building on a, a best-in-class national model in partnership with LISC. Our goal is to try to open that by the end of this calendar year, recognizing that when we hit the. That the other end, other side of this, I don't know when that is, but when we hit the other side of this, we need, we are going to need those resources at play to help during the recovery.
Okay. Thank you. And just one more question. You also apply for the capacity building dollars. Is that something that you. Still think when you will be able to get started this year, or?
Yeah, that's a great question. To be, yeah, to be candid, you know, our own work around racial equity and, and prioritizing that. Although it still continues to be a significant priority, it has hit the pause button of the last couple of months. Not in terms of our daily internal review of our work, but in terms of our long-range planning. We just have been. You know, had, had to move to crisis management. And so that has, that has slowed our process down. But in the last two to three weeks, we have agreed internally that we need to re-lift that up. For all of the obvious reasons, the, the national context, our own commitment, what the city needs, what the residents deserve. And so that, we, we do plan on re-engaging that work in earnest over the, over the coming couple of months. And I absolutely think that we can use those dollars, you know, over, over the coming year or so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thanks you all. Appreciate your work.
So. Based on everything that you heard, you're, everybody's comfortable with leaving them where they are?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And next we have AHEP. So staff is working remotely. They respond to critical. Emergency repairs. They use technology for estimates. They haven't provided any additional services, COVID-related services. They began rehab and repair services in late April, focus on exterior repairs. Return to full operation is contingent on city building, inspectors and industry partners. One strategy, strategy may be to focus more on emergency repairs. They are also planning for starts and stops. And on this list, it says. That they are projecting that their revenues, current and projected are lower. They have current, their current expenses are lower, projected expenses are the same. And current beneficiaries and projected are the same. You all want to keep them in the one B where they are?
I do. I do.
I think they're at two A rather than one B.
Yes, two A.
Yeah, the second one down on the left.
Yes. Okay. All right, and the two B, they were not funded, or they were funded? No, okay, so here. I was interested in Georgia Healing House, right? But they didn't submit an update, so I didn't know. I'm assuming that they. I don't know. But. That's one of the services that during this time, it may increase what people need. And then. These other categories, Pacham Medical, where are we with that? Is that something that we're trying to move or we're not?
I'm just trying to follow your, this is for the. Seventy-five hundred? Where are you at now?
I think it's page sixty-nine, the SSI, SSDI.
Oh, we're on the.
So in this category, we have the FAR internship, the supportive housing, are these. And maybe we, this is not a category we even have to consider, but it seemed like based on what we said was a priority. Kaki, what are your thoughts? Is this something we need to go through and consider or no?
Is this a capacity building request, the seventy-five hundred?
No, these were the solid, important categories, but they were all services that we are saying that during this time are essential, right? Or no?
I think.
Capacity building grant, Pacham T-Jack, funding for the full-time staff to attend the National Conference of Homelessness.
Okay.
I think, but there's also the SSI, SSDI outreach position.
SOAR?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a SOAR position, but it's not usually with Pacham, which is the confusion. It's been so long since I've read the applications, I'm not sure.
Oh, that's T-Jack.
Isn't SOAR House or at the.
Health Department.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, just as a clarification. Pacham Medical, I do not believe requested city money. I believe that was county funding only.
Okay, so then the only, so the FAR internship, is that one that we had already moved, or is that not?
You had discussed moving it, but we had not, we hadn't figured out what category it was going to move to.
What's its current?
Two B.
Two B, thirty-five thousand.
And if we, if we were looking at now putting the equity component upon that. In recalibrating its decision, approximately what score do you think it would have received? Again, this is true approximation. I'm not, I mean, this is your best guess. We understand.
I mean, yeah, best guess, I. Two A, one A, I'm just not sure. I need to see their exact score.
Okay.
I mean.
I'm really not going to put you on the hot seat, Ryan.
Right, I mean, I would use the same logic.
That you've got to evaluate to really get a good.
Sure.
A lot of the. So with, there's a group of them that we knew going into this process that we were already considering from March. And then there's some that we've added today based on. Just the immediate needs relative to food and other immediate needs. And I, so far, based on all of our conversations, I seem to have seen us going right to the solid essential category for all of these, with the exception of. That the CIC, that based, pending some more information from economic development, does seem like a couple sources from CARES. And through the. Does seem like a couple sources from CARES and through the regular CBDG process has been able to get some funding. And then the on our own, there was a little bit of a swap within theirs, where we were going to now give solid essential to their. Larger program and then eliminate the RAP funding because of where things are at with that program. So aside from that, everything else, I had us under an assumption of the solid essential category. For the ones that we were considering that weren't part of the original allocation. And that adds up with those other adjustments to be around a hundred and forty six thousand dollars.
But I even think, because you're talking about food stuff in this. And if you're talking about the support, the. Like legal aid, Sinbodaires, all of those, I think that I thought the agreement there was that we would move them into the. So I, what I think would probably need to happen is that we would have to take. If we really feel like there is this top tier list of this crisis pandemic. We would have to ask staff for that category. Then we probably need to shift from just two categories to three. That's what I'm thinking based on looking at this. And there are some things that are probably. Where we would want to shift probably to a third category, so below that sixty six, sixty seven percent. Or maybe we change that. Where we go from like the ninety seven percent to seventy. Five percent, seventy two percent, I don't know, we're ninety seven, how we got ninety seven, however we got there. Then maybe another category at the like fifty percent or something like that.
But I do think it's important for the highest ranking categories that we are doing things that are fully funding their requests. Or getting close to fully funding, because in some cases it means that they can't even, they, if we're not doing that for the most highly ranked programs. We're not confident they can even pursue those programs.
But I think what you're talking about is also like, one, this would have looked differently. If we had given that racial justice category, so what staff would have presented to us in the first place would have probably be different. And then I think we have to go on what people are able to, you know, offer at this time. And if that need is not, if that need is being met, met other places. And if something works well through this virtual world that we're talking about. And while we may think all of these things are important, I think that that's just a part of the hard conversation. That we would have to have. Or we can put everything into one category and then say only a certain percentage of all of them. But I don't think that, I think we could break this out into. You know, into maybe a third category, or maybe we ask staff to present us with both of those options. I don't know. In one, right now, we can just go around and just, oh, go ahead.
One thing I just wanted, I just seen the far update on the internship category. And what the internship program has started doing and how it's really trying to reach into our public housing. And also doing a lot of education about masks and checking in on kids. And I think it's covering, it's really, from what I'm seeing, it's it's going beyond even the internship program, what it was originally designed for. And working into trying to help families in public housing cope with COVID successfully. Which I think is a really important thing we need to be weighing right now.
And even during the first testing initiative that we did at Crescent Halls, without the floor captains. We wouldn't have been able to successfully do. That, you know, testing event there.
I just, again, this is just where COVID and equity both, I think, are pushing this position up higher. Than we even originally anticipated it being. Just when looking at, I'm just trying to, it's not be, it's, there's lots of programs I like. I'm just trying to look at what. What some, a program is tackle, and again, I just, what it is tackling. And what needs it is meeting in these two areas that we have been hit with in the last couple of months in particular. Equity's always been an issue, but on top of that, seeing the disproportionate amount that COVID is affecting those. Who have black or brown skin.
Okay, so I guess we can just go around and decide. I supported being a 1A, Cena's saying a 1A. Lloyd, where are you at with that?
Or which one now?
The far internship.
I don't know, I, the 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 stuff that they are apparently now doing that they hadn't been doing that's COVID related. Is a help. I, I don't know, it's a. Let's see what we say. I don't know, I'd probably be for a 2A. Again, I'm just conscious of how much money we've been adding. And we haven't been cutting anything.
All right, so 2A, Michael, are you at a 1A or 2A?
I mean, I'm fine to consider it either, but it's similar to the other things. You know, we haven't made any decisions on what we will cut. And with that in mind, I feel like 2A is probably more realistic for where we'll end up. I'm fine to consider it 1A. But I just, again, I'm, we've added money and haven't chosen anything to cut. I'm not sure where we're going to end up deciding again. You know, internship program versus providing people with food in that kind of choice. I just don't know where it will end up there.
So I think that's two and two. Heather, where you, where are you?
I'm just, I'm looking at, because I'm also looking at the free clinic, because they were previously ranked at 2B, and I just, I feel comfortable with both of them going to 2A.
All right, the far internship right at 2A. Next, the only thing at the, under the bottom is Sinbodaires. This is where we move them to the 1A, right? So that's in, that's the only thing we're considering there. Right? All right, so next we have. So Casa. All right, so they are saying that they are. Everything is lower. Revenues, projected revenues, current expenses, projected expenses, and. There are fewer beneficiaries and projected, and I guess this is the same conversation, more are projected. And this is, is this once, based on once courts, let me get this. I'm going to go to the list.
I think while the courts are certainly affecting current operations, I think generally. Everyone in the system expects an increase in the number of CPS referrals, the number of, an increase in the amount of kids in foster care. And therefore the need for Piedmont Costa Services. I'm not sure if that's part of the rationale, but that's certainly when we're looking at the system projected over the next six to twelve months. We're predicting an increase in all of the primary and tertiary systems that are connected to child welfare and foster care.
And and I think that'll be doubly, triply, quadruply true if schools. Are only partially reopened in the fall.
But, well, that may not be the case if, based on what we've been told is where most of the reports come from, right? So then if, so that. It just, you know, one, I think that we could do, as I said, which is another conversation, a better job. I know that there are certain things that we'll never be able to prevent, but even trying to figure out what supports we can offer families. So that we are not thinking that kids are just being abused and we're waiting for them to get into a mandatory reporter situation. To, you know, help them out. And I just think the support that families get, especially during this time, will be, you know. Will help with a lot of those factors. And then we're back to the larger questions that sometimes what if, what some families end up in. Needing care for other families based on race would not ever end up in the same situation for. So I know that doesn't help us here, but um, so they are, based on what. So when someone is saying more projected in the future, based on when all of these things open up. They are saying that they will need more money in a shorter term space. Or would they possibly need fewer dollars because they'll be doing the work for fewer months? We don't know.
I mean, I suspect that that they can't do a years worth of work in four months worth of time. Just be for practical reasons around staffing and those kinds of things, so I'm not really sure if that translates as directly as that. But I don't really know, and I don't know if Alicia might be on the phone on the line or not.
Do we know which, yeah, Brian, could you check the, I can't find them in this update. Did they not give us an update?
Kaki, can you give me the name again? We have Alexi Boris who's raised.
Lexi can provide an update for sure.
Lexi, you're on the city council, go ahead.
Can you hear us?
It's under Piedmont, Nakia.
I'll get it, just finally.
It's with me, this is Alicia Lenahan.
We can't hear you. Well.
Can you hear us at all?
We can hear you some, but not really clearly.
And I'll get very close to the computer. Can you hear me now?
You can try, Lexi. We can't hear you clearly.
And Nakia, I have to step out just for a couple of minutes. I'll be right back, though.
Okay. So while we wait for them to kind of get that fixed, it seems like, I mean, I would be, one of the questions that I would have is there. The kids who are currently in, the youth who are currently in care may need support. And Kaki, do you have an update just citywide? Because that was one of the programs that wasn't funded.
Lexi and Mayor Walker, if I could suggest, Lexi, if you can call a phone number in the room I'm in, I can at you in.
Yes.
And and that's nine seven zero three five three five. Nine seven zero three five three five.
Now we can hear you.
Can you hear us?
Yeah, it does sound better now.
Got music playing.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Hi, this is Alicia.
You will have to turn off the speaker.
Yes, turn me off up there.
If you're talking, we can't hear you.
You're muted now.
Now, now we're.
Go ahead. That was on my end. Go, go ahead.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Nodding, okay, thank you. I'm so sorry about that. Technology was not being kind.
We can't hear you again, so maybe call in the number that Brian suggested and he'll pass you in. That may be the best bet.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Mayor Walker, they are on via that connection.
Oh, okay.
I'm holding up the speakerphone to the other speakerphone. Okay, I'm sorry about that.
Yes, no, I'm just going to keep talking until.
Lexi.
So Cena, Cena's nodding. Kaki, can you hear me? A little bit, mayor?
Little bit, little bit.
A little bit.
Better.
Ever. So I will raise my voice. Is this helpful? Okay. We carried one hundred and eighty three kids into the pandemic. So we were serving those children in real time when everything shut down. And we have received forty nine referrals from the juvenile and domestic relations courts. In the time since the pandemic began. We finished a training class at the, in April. And those volunteers are being assigned to new children and existing volunteers are being assigned to them as well. So our courts, unlike other courts in the Commonwealth, have continued to hear our cases. So we have stayed right with the federal timeline and have been attending court. Via WebEx, in person, or via teleconference. Our volunteers have been seeing their children and their families, either by Zoom or FaceTime. Or telephone, and some have done what we're calling sidewalk visits. So they set up a yard chair and and they get a chance to talk to everybody while maintaining physical distance. Our, we're just the success coaches, and you may talk about those later, are serving our older youth. So their ages thirteen to eighteen, and then our young adults, ages eighteen to twenty one. And we have found particularly for our young adults, that their natural support systems are very fragile. So our coaches have continued to see our young adults, help them access groceries, food banks. Get to and from appointments, so they have, they have maintained physical contact with their young adults.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? No. Okay. So we are leaving them where they are? 1A. Our Child Health Partnership, they have. That they are lower in every category, current projected revenues and expenses. And they are going to be serving fewer people. Yeah, fewer people, they're currently serving fewer and projected to serve fewer. So. Based on that. I mean, the lower expenses and lower revenues could mean that it all, what they requested in the first place would equal out. Or we could say that since they would be lower and serving fewer people. Is, Brian, could you ask if anybody is on that would like to speak to this without us just guessing? Is, Brian, could you ask if anybody is on that would like to speak to this without us just guessing?
Mayor Walker, we have John Napsiger. John, go ahead.
Mayor and council members, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Yeah, we were, the, the pri, the lower revenue at this point is not, and, and the lower numbers served are actually not primarily COVID related. I think we're really uncertain what that means for the coming year. For the current year, this, the question was to, to what we projected originally in the budget. And we took a pretty significant decrease in a private grant and also in our United Way funding. United Way overall has really decreased their, their grant making program. So it was not specific, just specific to us, but we were certainly one of the larger grant recipients from the United Way. So, so we are, in terms of services, we have continued doing virtual work, but working with all the families that we've been working with. And kind of providing the same array of services we, I think, as we noted in the, in the update during the, the first couple of months of the pandemic, we, we did stop enrollments. Not being able to see folks face to face, but continued serving the families we were with. We, we are starting, have started enrolling families again. So it's, I, I would, I would characterize it as not a huge decrease in, you know, overall what we're looking at in terms of budget. Year with, if, if, if the city is able to give the recommended amount, we're still, we will be down about 10% in terms of budget. And, and similar in terms of families.
You're saying, assuming that we, we continue to provide you with what we, what's been slated, you're still down 10%?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So is that staying or?
I feel so, yes.
I'll just point out that at some point it's going to have to be a different answer.
I just, I just feel like with these essential exemplarries, I'm just struggling unless there's a compelling reason not to keep supporting them, then we wanted to kind of concentrate funding in areas where we could fully support programming so that, versus just trying to spread everything everywhere. And so those are the, that's the category I feel the most strong about in addition to these immediate needs, given the COVID.
All right, so we, I think the conversation around foothills is that we can just skip over them. That that's been pretty consistent. So region, ready kids counseling, they give an update? They're saying the same across the board. Everybody's fine with them staying where they are?
I am. They have three applications. One is a one A, one B, and one is another one's a one B.
Yeah, this is just the counseling is what we have in this category. So we hadn't had a discussion about those two Bs.
One Bs.
One Bs, yeah. Are we bringing that into the discussion?
Yeah, this category in general for me around education and youth is one that I just, it would take something sweeping for me to feel like we should be changing recommendations in this category.
So this is funded at 55%?
Is 55% Ryan, the solid essential? I'm sorry.
So we're talking about the, the counseling? Is that the one we're talking about? Which I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out which program.
Important exemplary, important youth programs, they are funded at 55%?
Learning and health families.
Boys and Girls After School, Calm K through four, C4K.
Okay, okay. Yes, the, the one Bs are, were previously at 55%. There's two of the Ready Kid programs that fell. And the one B on the education and youth.
And I was just saying, I can't, I don't, I don't have an appetite for going on lower funding than what was recommended. We're not in a position to add anything at this point, so.
Okay. All right, so that's where we are. And based on the conversations, that's probably not going to work for them to come up with anything that, to remain in those categories. So I guess probably the best thing would be, because Ryan, you said you needed some time, right? I mean, I would want to, like, if we're not back in session, I do have a, I would want to know the, Boys and Girls Club said that they are current revenues, projected revenues, current expenses, projected expenses, current beneficiaries, current projected, everything's fewer, lower and lower. And then maybe they said something in here.
They did, because they're, I think the city schools are looking at them to utilize their space for extended.
But then to be paying them out of some of the money that we gave them, right? So that's what I'm, is that an increased expense on their part? Or is that dollars from the school's budget going to the Boys and Girls Club? And I guess without all those dots connecting and having the information, that's the question that I had when, when I read that.
My understanding that if they're able to meet the needs of a school, that it will dramatically increase their expenses. And I don't know that they know that those expenses are going to be covered by school revenues or not.
Yeah, but if Dr. Atkins and her team are asking to utilize their services, then they should be staffing, providing meals, that whole thing, that should, that will be the school just using the building and maybe they're, they're donating the space.
But beyond the school's requests, they're also acknowledging that they're going to have an increased need for all day childcare, especially with their younger members, independent of the schools.
Yes, but that, I can't, we can ask them, but that's also something based on where the numbers are going across the country that we will not be able to provide, like the essential employees only. And then the same situation we were in, in the beginning. So I, I think for services like that, where the need may arise based on COVID, that is probably where we should put money up. And then see what happened and know these are the places that will request it versus saying that, that that's the case and just giving. Are we asking for an update if organizations use the money for something other? So if we have.
There's a contractual obligation for them to use it for the things that they've applied for, correct, Ryan? Like they sign that, they can't just use it other places.
That is correct. In the funding agreement we send out to the agencies, they, they sign that they will use the funds for the programs as described in the application. And if there's any significant programmatic changes, funding, or what have it, they have to give us a written notification. And allow us to, then we could come back to, if we had received, we haven't received one of those previously, but if we did, we would come back to you and discuss that and make counsel aware of that.
And we do have a hand raised, and I'm not sure if it's related to this or not.
Brian, who is that?
Kate Lambert. Would you like me to?
Yes.
Kate, you're on with city council. Go ahead.
Wait, after unmute, Ms. Lambert.
Sorry, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Kate Lambert. I'm the chief development officer for the Boys and Girls Club. And I just wanted to make a brief comment, and that is that we've been spending the summer transitioning from our traditional program to a summer of virtual programming. We are anticipating that moving forward into the fall, we are going to be taking the lead very much from our Charlottesville City School partners. A lot of what we do is going to depend on what they do. We are ready for multiple scenarios, including a plan for a full day program that may serve kids on alternate days. That, but we are anticipating being open every day, all day as a possibility. The preparation for that, we are mainly concerned with the needs of our younger kids and meeting, meeting the needs of families, especially those who, in which both parents are working. And, and those who qualify for free or reduced lunch. And we're also concerned with members who have no alternatives for supervision at home without club services. And so we are seeing ourselves providing an essential need to fill the gaps when kids are not in school. And we are prepared to do that. We are also looking at a year without special events. That's going to leave us with a $200,000 gap in our budget in Charlottesville alone. So we are, we would request continued funding at the recommended level if possible.
Thank you. All right, so I guess, so at some point we're going to have to make, I, I get it. And I have questions about both the United Way childcare scholarships and Piedmont YMCA. I mean, I know that, you know, family members of mine who do childcare in the area and having a family member who child attends Barrett. Barrett was closed for some time, then they only took, you know, back a few kids, so they're not at capacity. United Way, the dollars, the contractual dollars for scholarship, is that something that we can do something else with where, with even the money that was allocated during the last budget? If kids were not in their childcare programs, I'm interested in how much money was saved there. The same with the YMCA and moving forward. Do childcare facilities open up in phase three at 100%? Like capacity or no?
We don't have money going to the United Way childcare scholarships or whatever. We have $15,000 that was asked for for their financial stability program, which we haven't.
No, that's in the contractual dollars.
Okay.
Yeah. So I'm just saying it's just something to keep in mind, whatever that number is, if people haven't been able to utilize those. Go ahead.
I thought pre-K childcare already, my sister, three-year-old is in daycare every day right now in Virginia Beach. So I thought that at phase two, those kids that are not school-aged are already in daycare.
The programs never really closed.
Right.
Based on their willingness. And so there was some fluctuating and change in guidance about distancing and about friendliness and those kinds of things. But really there hasn't, at, at some point they were said their childcare programs were open for essential workers and now they're open for everyone. We did not see a dramatic increase or decrease in the demand for childcare programs locally. I will say that I believe that while they're in the contractual obligations package, they're only, the, the funding is only for actual use. So if a scholarship gets identified, then, then our payment goes through. But if there isn't a scholarship provided, then you don't get that money.
Okay.
So it's under, under phase three, childcare centers will be allowed to reopen and the capital law, yeah, well, that's what it's saying, will be allowed to reopen.
But I'm just saying that I know, like, especially the parents that these scholarships exist for, when you're talking about layoffs, it's like some of the people, like if you talk about parents who may have been working at UVA who were, whatever, furlough, I don't even think they were furloughed, they were just let go. But anyway, whatever the term was for them, they were not using the scholarship. So while we may have that in place for United Way, and is, I think, is Jessica on here? I think I saw her name earlier. Maybe she can answer that for their organization.
Jessica, you're on with council. Can you hear us?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, so we, we did close the YMCA Learning Center for a period of time due to COVID-19. We then evaluated along with the city and whether or not there was a need for emergency care for essential workers, specifically healthcare workers. Ultimately, we just, we identified that there wasn't a strong local need. So we, we focused our efforts on continuing services for our existing clients. We did reopen fully last Monday, June 22nd. And we've actually seen an increase in scholarship requests with people trying to get back into the workforce and need childcare for that zero to five range.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, council? So, so I think what Khaki said is just something that I definitely would like for us to pay attention to in the beginning. If United Way is a, based on the contract that they provide, the, if the service is being provided, then we are billed for it and we pay. If that's the way that that's happening, then that's something that we may need to look at. You know, moving forward, because in that case, the months that the center was closed, which you, you aired that the kids weren't going to childcare, under the United Way contract, will we have still paid? You're muted.
We may have paid a portion of that time while we were like holding everything harmless. But once it became clear that this wasn't a two or three week suspension, I suspect there was some rerouting of that, but we can find out for our next meeting.
Maybe we lose her?
It does appear Mayor Walker dropped off.
Show me back. Sorry to hear my kids are like getting restless. Can you hear them? I like my kid. Fighting with each other. It's great. This is going to be the new COVID world. Wrong with bringing your kids to work every day?
Gap in, in terms of that amount of money between what we've said we want to newly consider for funding versus the amount of money available?
Sure. I've been trying to keep a running tally, and this is purely based on the last, the, the last percentages, like based on where we've moved, what categories we've moved people into, based on that, the previous percentages. And based on what, the quick math is somewhere just shy of $162,000 at this point that has been added. And I did get additional information from Chris Engel on CIC about some of the, about those, what the, the city has funded in the past. But with the dollars that they've got from CETA for the Business Equity Fund and Business Recovery Fund were purely. were purely for the grant stuff. It was not, no administrative funds have been given on that end for the CIC piece. And so previously, the administrative funds from the city came through the Vibrant Community Funds, ABRT side of it. So at least on the funds coming through the economic development arm, it was not administrative. It was purely for the grant stuff.
Thank you for checking on that, Ryan.
I don't know if you jumped on right after this, Mayor Walker, but the gap is $162,000 that we're at.
Plus, if we want to add to it with CIC administrative funds.
Now, and those grant funds that they're administering for us, is there any option for them to tag on administrative fees? Or are these only pass, okay, thank you.
And I approached the subject with you guys during the March work session. And I know it's not the most popular idea, but neither is cutting from agencies that we determine that you do want to fund. But I just bring up that currently in the Council Strategic Initiatives slash Equity Funds, there is just shy of $350,000. So there is the ability to fund at least some or a portion of this through that, if you did not want to reduce elsewhere. It's just an option to consider. Again, I see the mayor shaking her hand. I knew that wasn't a popular option, but it was something I brought up with council previously in March, and I felt that I should bring it up yet one more time.
That was my next question to ask, so thank you for that.
One of five hits, but I don't, I think instead of us always, because again, what that money is supposed to be for and how less of it it is that's already there, and the equity component around that. And even though you all may consider some of these programs related to equity, I don't think that that whole conversation around ensuring that we're getting like the best bang for our buck, I don't think you all are open to having that, which is where we get stuck at every year. And so, you know, but again, I'm just one person, but I don't support it.
So is the strategic, the Equity Fund is like earmarked within the Strategic Initiatives Fund, right? Like it's a separate thing, but it's technically in it? So is that $350,000, everything in the Strategic Initiatives Fund? Or is that strictly what has been earmarked as like Equity Fund?
No, that Equity Fund for the past couple of years have been at $1 million. And so the money that's in there now is all that I was able to fight for and get from the surplus dollars into that fund.
And at this point in time, it is the same thing. The Equity Fund and the Council Strategic Initiative Fund are the same thing. It's the Council Strategic Initiative Fund is now
The Council Strategic Initiative.
Is now the Equity Fund.
Keep track of those. I do keep track of those, and yes, we consider them the same pot. But I do have a running tally of what is the Equity versus what has been considered just leftover Strategic Initiatives. But of that, $350,000, just shy of $350,000, $296,000 of that is, was what's left from the $300,000 that was put in at year-end. The other roughly $45,000, $50,000 is previous Strategic Initiative dollars. So it's all at the discretion of council to use that entire $350,000 towards Equity, not use any of it towards Equity. I mean, that's all at the discretion of council, because for staff, it's all under one pot and the same thing. But we are at least tracking it so that if, you know, when asked, we can say this is what council has said is specifically Equity. Now, there's some gray areas that the council has kind of said this is kind of Equity, and so we factored on there, but that's a running tally that we have left is that.
Any of that $350,000, you said, roughly?
Roughly, it was just shy of $350,000. Based on my most recent accounting, it was $349,000.
None of that is earmarked or anticipated for any kind of specific programming, right?
At this point, unless there's something I haven't been made aware of that council has been discussing, no, because I keep a running tally of those that have been earmarked. And, you know, even if they haven't gone out yet, if council has specifically allocated dollars through an appropriation or a resolution, we have that on this running tally.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, just trying to get a sense of exactly where it's at.
And are there other dollars that are earmarked but haven't come to fruition right now? I can't remember, Ryan.
I'd have to go through, but for example, previously, Office of Equity and Inclusion was, some dollars were dedicated for that, about $197,000. And that program didn't get up and running. Now that's still sitting there to go towards the Office of Equity and Inclusion once it gets up and running. And based on what we have in the budget, it's anticipated that those would be needed. But that's the first example. When I look at the list that I've seen, that I would have to go through. I mean, I'd have to really go through and look at what's on the list and track back to see what has actually come off to really know exactly what has and hasn't been used.
So I think that based on what the Equity dollars are supposed to stand for is that if people come throughout the year and need dollars for something that we want to support, that the money is there. We do have reserve pots of money throughout the city that are also there. So this dollars, using them now, not knowing what will come down the line, I don't agree with that. But also, I was thinking something, but I don't remember what it was, because I'm tired. I think working within the money that we have for this, even if we have to decrease somewhere. Because right now, we're saying that all of these things during the pandemic are working as they've worked before the pandemic, and that's just not the case. So we're back to the same problem we have every year, which is the conversation has been consistent through trying to revive this program. And all the energy that we got from the nonprofits is that it's been consistent that if, even if we can't ensure, which is why we need the Measurements and Solution Office, to say not just what people are saying they're doing, and that we get that touchy-feely, oh, this is great, we want you to continue. But actually, are they doing it? And we have no way to measure it outside of what they tell us. And there's no data to back up whether this is the best use of resources. And we have a hard time arriving at that conclusion on our own.
I'm in agreement with you, Mayor, in terms of conserving those Equity and Inclusion dollars to be held as a reserve for other projects that are needed throughout the city to be able to do Equity and Inclusion program.
Well, that just gets us back to just the conversations we had earlier around, like, a lot of these things are important. First of all, the things that weren't recommended for funding that we're now considering funding. And in that group, there are some that I think, as much as we want to support them, they maybe aren't meeting the immediate needs. And so.
So who are you thinking? Because the only things that we were the Bridgeline Day Program and on our own rap. On our own, we added on our own operations.
We added the Legal Aid and we added the Free Clinic. FAR, we've talked about adding CIC. So some of them are essential right now, I think, and some of them, as much as they're, I'm not saying they're not important. I don't want to be, anyone put me on the record as saying some things aren't. But, you know, Michael was saying earlier, like, as we think about the most immediate needs now, as we're adding things to this list, it's in my head, like, okay, if we're gonna have to make adjustments, some of these had a 4C rating.
You're talking about the Equity Legal Aid.
Well, even Team Betettas had a 4C rating. And I was with you last year, we supported them. I'm just saying, like, looking at kind of where.
Go ahead.
Looking at where we came into in this process. There was a lot of things that we said that we were going to let them jump several categories for reasons that are all valid. But when we're looking through the lens of like, this is, we're in this crisis mode, and we're talking about food and housing and these most critical needs, I share the concern that we need to prioritize those first and foremost. It was the same thing we had to do with the CAF funding, which was really hard decisions to make, because other programs aren't going to get funded as a result.
So that's why, that's the thought that I had when I said that we are looking at this from a two-category perspective, but I think we probably need to look at it. So if we're saying, just work with me here while I go through, I like what Kaki said, when she was cut off at the end, so I may not have heard everything she was saying, because I plugged my computer into the wall but didn't plug the cord into my computer, so I did not complete the process. But if I did hear where she was going with this, was that United Way, we're back to that. They get the dollars for the scholarships. And based on the way United Way work, YMCA could be a partnership to where we allocate money to United Way the same way, specifically for YMCA. And that if those scholarships are not used the same way that they may not be used now, then the funding doesn't go out. Versus the way we allocate those dollars now is that once we allocate to them, it's not that same process. So in a COVID world, where daycares may not be operating to capacity, maybe the people that we sponsor scholarships for may not be working. And that may change based on what phase we are in in the government. Changing that process would ensure that, one, the money is still available and for the citizens, we can even say that it's specifically, this amount is specifically for YMCA to go through the United Way process. But that if the money isn't used, then we don't have to go through this process of requesting an update that we know that it's the same process as this organization. So that sort of consolidates that process, and we may save some dollars there.
I'm just curious, why is YMCA, I mean, this is, then, not a crack at the YMCA or anyplace, but why is YMCA in this when somebody like Barrett isn't?
Well, I'm gonna let somebody else answer, because it's something that I have voiced concerns about since we started donating money. So I know it seems every year that I am saying strongly how I feel about certain organizations, and that is true. But I think if we all want the same thing, then we are open to this kind of getting to how do we best serve people best. But if somebody else wants to answer.
I mean, I'm just wondering, why isn't YMCA getting the scholarships through United Way the way that Barrett does? I mean, I'm just kind of understanding that if anyone knows.
I don't know, and I don't know the distinction between the way that the funding is going either through United Way to the Y or directly to the Y. And I don't know why Barrett is not in here. I know that there's a number of new agencies who have historically decided not to apply for funding from the city because we have historically prioritized and rewarded those agencies that were already getting funding. And so it was hard to break into this. It's part of the Vibrant Community Fund sort of revision and redefinition that we hope to address that. But, and I don't know if that's the reason, but it's possible it is.
Mayor Walker, we have Jessica from the YMCA available. Jessica, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, so I think to address what Kaki just said, I mean, even as the Y is an organization, you know, it took us about three cycles to even get into the ABRT processes as an elective process. And so I think Barrett is equally able to apply. I think with respect to the crossover with United Way, so the Y really has kind of four buckets. So we work very closely with Department of Social Services, so we get funding through that avenue. We also do work with United Way, so we get early learner scholarships through that avenue. We have direct pay, and then what we found is there's still a gap in service for families that cannot, do not qualify for DSS, do not qualify for the United Way, but then they cannot afford the full cost of tuition. So that is where this kind of fourth avenue, if you will, comes in for scholarships for those families. And it's income-based, so we do require a 1040 tax return. We look at income-based sliding scale, and then have that, again, third way to get people into the program to address high-quality early childhood education.
And what's the income guidelines for that fourth?
I can send it to you. I can pull up our website real quick. Give me one second. So anything, so where DSS and United Way will pick up anything up to $30,000, we then provide scholarships for $30,000 up to $70,000. And that's annual household income, and then we also look at the dependence in the household and the family structure.
So I don't remember that being what we approved the first year, because this came to us once you all stopped receiving the rent subsidies from the Jefferson School. And I don't have my notes in front of me, but I know that up to $70,000 was the request.
You mean the income-based tier?
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean, our request is for the early education scholarships, and specifically around high quality, so to give access to all kids in the program. And so specifically, our metrics are around the PALS pre-K testing to make sure that we're preparing low-income children to reach those kindergarten readiness benchmarks.
So I'm confused. What is, what is the, what is the request funding?
So the request funding is the largest area nonprofit childcare provider for low-income youth ages 0 to 5. We provide high-quality, full-day, year-round, licensed early education and school readiness program with the goal to prepare children to meet kindergarten readiness benchmarks and support economic self-sufficiency for area families. So it's towards the early education program as a whole.
Okay, so not for scholarship.
Scholarship-based, no.
It's not scholarship-based, no.
And are you still planning to open July 1st?
We actually opened a week early, so we opened last Monday, June 22.
And you're at capacity, the same as you were pre-COVID, or you have lower enrollment?
So we can't currently with DSS guidelines around the social distancing. But we anticipate that we will be at capacity for the start of the next school year, which is August 2020, August 2020 through July 2021.
And did you all save any resources from the allocation from this previous year?
For the fiscal year 2020?
She was referring to this current fiscal year, the one we're just finishing.
Yeah, so I mean, we had, we, we had basically the same expenses that we had, we just had two months of no tuition. So that's where, on the graph there, it talks about our revenues decreased, but our expenses did stay the same.
See, you continued to employ your teachers.
We did, yeah, so we did apply for the PPP funding, and we were able to get that. So that allowed us to pay for teachers and rent to offset that loss of revenue from tuition and so forth.
I'm mute, Tina.
Am I now? I'm sorry, the, the, yeah, no, I don't have any other questions if nobody else does, as well as saying.
I don't have any more questions.
Okay, so. Do you all want to, we have 50 minutes left. And we can do. I think we could try to go through this list and see if we. So there are, things are already in three categories, because I forgot about the two. One B, one A, when I was thinking about this earlier. And so the only thing that's probably left for us to do is look at the percentages. Right, is there, you got?
Yeah, the one thing I did want to say is, I needed to clarify something. I missed where, I think I missed where we had removed the Bridgeline Day Program funding earlier. So that takes the total increase down to 134,000, as opposed to 161 change. So it's 134,000, but. Yeah, I, I mean, we can look at the percentages, but I mean, for 134,000, I, I don't know, it's. Yeah.
So. What if we did like 80, no, 97, so what if we did 90%? 60% and? 50%, would that work?
I'd have to look. For every, so I think if you, yeah, for every, like, 10% you do out of the exemplary, that's roughly 155,000 right there. So I mean, just that, excuse me, from the exemplary essential, the ones that, that were currently at 97%. That's like, you know, every 10% is like 150,000 there. Every 10% out of the two A, the important exemplary, is like 25,000, 10%.
So they don't even.
We don't even need to, to cut that.
That much.
Yeah.
So you could just find exactly what we need, based on, I guess, prioritizing keeping each category as high as possible. Unless council is saying they want to cut one category more deeply than others. Correct, if you want to say, go ahead, Tina.
Is, and I love A H I P, they worked on my house, but I want to know, did A H I P also get C D B G funding? Or any other funding?
They did not get calf funding, except for the very little that we had in the beginning of the year. And there was some amount from one of.
Yeah, all categories from C B G G and home.
Home.
Also, in looking at that then, I know that it's really important to maintain, to help people get their housing repaired. But would anybody else look at dropping that down to an A2 versus an A1 category?
It already is, it already is a two A.
I thought it was a two, I thought it was a one A.
That's two A.
So it'd be the 55% or keeping them where they are.
And then.
Their request was 250, and they're getting right now 165.
Right, and the one thing that wasn't talked about, I do need some clarity on this, was initially, in our scenarios that, that we were working out, there was roughly $55,000 for the capacity building grants. That was set aside, and we didn't really discuss those and the feeling of where we go with those, because that could be, if we remove some of those, that could be some additional potential.
And I think that was a conversation that I had with this, you talk about this, right? Because some of these things, we are not even, are not even what we were considering really when we were talking about establishing the capacity building. And I went through, so you, how much is already funded? Is this funded, or?
Well, I, I guess the, the question would be, as of right now. Because the capacity building grants were part of that 2.3 million dollar figure, that would add. Every capacity building we say we want to move forward with, would, would add to that 134,000 I brought up earlier. So.
I mean, I went through this list, and there was some. Like, the Health Department is all, already one of our contractual programs, but then I understand what they wrote during the capacity building. But do we want $10,000 or $8,000? We respectfully request to reduce this amount by eight, so has that already been done?
We had recommended, or the city manager's budget recommended 7,500, so they're, when they're asking for a reduced amount to 8,000, that's still more than what we were.
No, they said reduce the amount.
We respectfully request.
Request to reduce amount of $8,000 to fund this work. So are they on $2,000?
They were only approved at 7,500, they were originally requesting 10,000, they were approved at 7,500, now they're requesting 8,000.
I thought this says a reduced, so I thought there was something in there was saying reduction. By, and I don't know, I was just reading this wrong. We respectfully request a reduced amount of $8,000 to, oh, so extra five, okay, I got the wording now. But do we want to fund the Health Department right now, digitizing records? And developing a comprehensive, I guess that, I understand the comprehensive onboarding program for staff. Including a he- health history of our role, but MAP to Health does some of that already, right? Talk about.
Well, that's through the Health Department, isn't it?
Yeah, but this is in addition to the work they're already doing, this is something that's saying they are going to be doing.
I have a slightly different concern about capacity building grants, because it looks like most of the capacity building grants, 37, 37,500 of it anyway. Are going to organizations that probably already have pretty good capacity. You know, I, I, I can imagine $10,000 to Birth Sisters, or $7,500 to TJ Land Trust would be a lot more meaningful. But I, I have a hard time seeing how the Piedmont Y M C A can't fund something of $10,000 that they want to do. Likewise, P H A, likewise, the Health Department, I mean, the Health Department's probably getting a lot of money thrown at them right now. I'm not sure we need to throw another $7,500 at them.
I mean, at this point, the only two capacity building that I am interested, I mean, that I've, just from looking at, that I am advocating for would be the Land Trust and the Birth Sisters.
That's kind of where I'm feeling.
Well, use the additional lenses today of equity, and also of sort of COVID emergency response. You might legitimately adopt those same lenses for looking at the capacity building grants to see if there were things that rose to the top for you, or didn't. Since you applied the same sense of sort of urgency logic to the other issues.
But again, I think for the Land Trust is. Of all the money we're spending in housing, even though this thing currently exists, is this the best use of the vibrant community fund? And I don't think that that is.
As I'm looking at the, the description, I'm not 100% sure I understand, but they, they want to spend 7,500, or they want 10,000, we're proposing 7,500. To hire a local independent consultant to create a five-year.
Five-year development plan.
That, that's not a, that's not a crisis intervention answer.
Well, and I don't.
It's not important, but it's not a crisis.
I unfortunately have to agree, because I know, I think it's one of the most important tools we can build. And they do need to build that capacity, because they're not quite there yet to be a strong enough institution. But if we're looking at cuts, it's just not an emergency, immediate COVID need.
Okay, great, and I do support that the Birth Sisters is the one that's really kind of rising to the top in terms of priority and need, for what I anticipated we'd be using these dollars for.
Yeah, all right, so next we have the Bridgeline, and they would be seeking funding for new outreach and development activities to initiate data collection analysis regarding community support, including monetary contributions and volunteerism.
They didn't get any, though.
Is that zero?
Yeah.
Yeah, the next few are zero.
Health Department's the next funded.
The what?
Health Department is the next one that got funding.
Okay, and we're saying no to that? Or we said yes?
I'm inclined to say no, just because, like I said, I don't think they, they, they would not have trouble finding 10,000 or $8,000 out of their budget elsewhere if they really wanted to do that work.
Live arts, no funding?
Right.
Can't tell with these, the local food hub, do we need to give them money here too, since we already?
I think since we're putting them up on the other area, we can.
Kaki, what are your?
Refresh myself, is there a mail in here? One is they're requesting the money for.
It's 10,000 to hire a consultant to.
Fresh pharmacy program evaluation.
Right.
And then 6,800 to go to a conference.
And I think that one of the things we realize is that we probably should have said no, no conferences as part of our capacity building, because there was no one who read the capacity building grants and felt compelled to send folks to conferences, and several people did that, and it was over our oversight that we didn't identify that that was probably not viable request. And I would suggest that, that the funding that could go to a consultant would probably be more readily needed at the moment for actual food delivery services.
So we can take both of these out since we put them up in the other category, right?
Well, neither of them had received funding in the capacity.
Okay.
He, Y M C A is the next one with money.
Okay, thank you, the city manager budget recommends full funding for this $10,000. Piedmont Y M C A family seeks a capacity building grant to conduct an equity inclusion diversity assessment by a third-party consultant to proactively understand and address racism as an organization in the context of Charlotte's community. A two-day workshop, Pauline T H workshop, to 40 staff members, the racial institute evaluates the organization from a top-down approach. Increase initiatives to growing, you know, membership will be reflective of the community we serve, staff will be reflective of the community we serve. Increase outreach initiatives to grow need-based scholarships by 5% as well as other objectives identified through the process.
I, I just don't see it enough as an immediate crisis need.
I'm just not sure it's physically possible in the next many, many months.
Okay.
Awful truth.
I mean, I applaud this initiative to do this. But again, I, I, at this point in time, I don't.
P H A, one-year project to bring low-income minority residents to the table, to hear how structural housing inequities have impacted them. Goal is to build organizational capacity to understand the complexities of housing inequities, and to infuse a community-driven approach into the analysis of racial equity. Pilot was envisioned as a one-year pilot to engage residents, facilitate an in-person conversation. At this point, we are uncertain about timing, when we'd be able to bring together these discussions using technologies just such as Skype or Zoom to engage residents is an alternative. Though not an attractive one, given the likelihood that residents would not have access to such technology.
I think that leads me to say no, if they don't have confidence they can even execute it well in the COVID world.
I agree, similar to the Y M C A.
Again, it's a project I really, really approve of.
FAR is applying for capacity building in two primary areas, strategic planning and staff leadership development. If funds remain after accomplishing activities in the two areas, we would like to hire a consultant to help creating a plan to expand development, development activities. FAR still intends to use funds to conduct strategic planning and staff leadership training. Though the focus of the activities may change in order to enable FAR to adjust during the crisis time and ensure we're moving forward with plans to implement and staff a community research review board. Section three, hire an executive director, develop and expand resident governance of FAR. If funding is available after strategic planning and training, we intend to hire a consultant to expand our fundraising development activities.
I have the same concerns about this as I do about the last couple. Great ideas, this is not the year that we need to do it.
I'm a little torn. Because I think it's certainly true, but I see it as perhaps more immediate in that, I think, especially with C R H A getting a new executive director. The capacity building will be important in order to get, you know, those first phases, to help to get them, you know, shovel-ready and happen. But I also recognize, you know, we're in a position where, you know, things just have to get cut.
Yeah, I think in terms of what they put down here, especially the section three, and, you know, program and the work from FAR with that, and Dr. Richardson and I, we are on the P M T, which is kind of a, you know, capacity building. I just started on this, I can't tell you everything. But we are on it with ensuring that the resources that C A C F has awarded to FAR, that they are able to, well, to FAR, C R, as FAR, C H R A, and the city at the table having these discussions. So I could see if some of the funding from that is gone to be used here, why it would be important, but is someone on here that we could ask that question? Or if there's already.
Well, we do have Brandon on here.
Brandon, you're on with.
Brandon, you're on with council, go ahead.
Hello, council, um. Not quite sure what the question was, but happy to. Answer it.
It's the capacity building, um. Uh, application that was um. Submitted to um provide strategic planning for staff leadership development, um. And then if funds remain after accomplishing activity in the two areas, they would hire a consultant to help with creating a plan to expand development activities. And then it talked about in the COVID update, the moving forward with plans to implement and staff. Community research review board, section three, hire an executive director and develop and expand residence governance of FAR. So we are just questions about. What that looks like in COVID.
Sure, well, if if you're not fully aware, I mean, FAR is at a a critical. Uh, point in our life where, you know, it's expand or or reduce our um ability to have. Public housing residents in charge of their own destinies, so um, you know, we are. We've been working towards this research review board for a number of years now, we're close to being able to launch, I think. COVID hadn't happened, we'd be. In the position to do that, um, and we are hiring for an executive director. Um. And, you know, these are pretty big expansions of of what we need to do and we really need to, we we need to be able to sit down and. Uh strategically figure out how how we're going to manage all this um in the coming years. Um, we've done a a lot of work to build. Resident influence over their own lives and at this point, we need to uh. To dig in, get the knowledge that we need and, you know, figure out how our organization moves forward. Um, doing these things. Um, as it relates to the PMT, I kind of look at that uh piece of it as sort of supplementing. Um, whatever we can do to help us expand our capacity. Um, our research review board is 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 moving forward, um, it's really, it's a big. It's a big add-on to our work, but truly meaningful, that puts, you know, the community in charge of the kinds of research that's conducted in the community. Uh, and it's going to take a lot of work and we have to hire staff for that, um, and we need to know how we're going to effectively. Handle that, and then as we look at redevelopment. We've done a pretty good job getting to this point. Um, but it doesn't just end with phase one construction and phase two. Construction, you know, there's the entirety of redevelopment and public housing and expanding affordable housing in Charlottesville that. Um, you know, the biggest. I think the biggest help to the entire Charlottesville community on this is having residents in the forefront and being able to make decisions about that, and that requires capacity. On a bigger scale than what FAR is doing right now, so.
Okay, thank you, are there any other questions? No, okay, thanks, Miranda, um, thoughts?
I'm just trying to think about as relative to how we're looking at some of the other, not too much dissimilar, but I understand there are differences in what's being considered. This is a question of can it be done effectively? In the next twelve months? Given all the other hurdles.
And the other, another piece, I guess, that I'm I'm thinking about is. Looking at some of the other things that we have talked about adding to the list. I'm thinking, okay, is this more important than that? Is this something we need to fund more than that? Is the local food hub, for example, uh where we're, it looks like if I'm remembering the calculations correctly, we're probably talking about. Giving them somewhere in the neighborhood of eighteen, nineteen, twenty thousand dollars. Uh, versus ten thousand dollars for uh for FAR for this. You know, I I hate to be overly dramatic about it, but you know. If if we're talking about feeding starving children versus this kind of thing, I go for feeding starving children. And which is kind of what I've been saying all along, let's focus on the crisis needs. And so I would say if they've been working on this for a few years. Hopefully, we'll all be in a better position next year, but for right now, we we have other things we have to focus on.
Any other thoughts? So next, we have does not recommend funding, recommend shelter for help in emergencies, um. The proposal seeks financial support to engage consultant services to examine the shelter's current data gathering evaluation process. Offer recommendations for improvement in the process and create more effective tools for use, improve data. Will aid the development of additional service programs, collaboration and outreach. And they'd have no proposed um changes. At this for during COVID.
And they were not being recommended.
This one was the one before.
This one was, it's recommended for funding.
But I I feel the same for this as I have about the others.
And we already talked about the, so the last one, so that was uh. Counseling that out, so the only thing we're funding here, it seems like. Is. The birth sister. And. Was that it? Just the birth sisters.
Based on a general dialogue, yeah.
All right, how much do we?
Can we simplify things, Ryan?
Where are we at now?
I think now we're at the point where, because we forgot about these dollars had to be taken in, that um, he then has to just adjust. The percentages to maximize all that we can, um.
Within that dollar amount.
Yeah.
I don't want to.
We are, oh, go ahead, Michael. Public comment at some point, but go ahead.
Um. I know this will only complicate it, but um. I, maybe I just missed it, but was there consensus on removing the bridge line funding and what was the rationale? Um, I may have just missed that.
Capacity building, it was not recommended before.
No, no, I'm talking about, I think it may.
Oh, what Brian, sorry, what Ryan mentioned for up above.
Yeah, we kept the residential and case management and removed the day program.
Because they can't do it right now, right?
I believe Danielle, Daniela Pretzer is maybe still on the line and could answer any questions related to their capacity around delivering that, um. Daniela Pretzer.
No. Danielle, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so yeah, thanks for, yes, I'm here since one o'clock. So yeah, I appreciate that moment to talk about the day program, um. As I, I think we've pointed out, the costs have really not changed at all because we now. Um, doing a lot of outreach um through Zoom, we have. And I I understand the mayor was concerned about the changes in the people we serve. Um, the revised numbers that changes has changed again because now we actually serve five more people than in this. In this, in the um application because people. Have learned to Zoom, we do a lot of, uh, we do art with the Zoom, we do. They do yoga, they do their day program, we teach them things through Zoom that they, otherwise they would sit at home. The cost for um everything we, you know, the where we are situated for staff. Um, is the same, so it has really not changed. What is really, I've got to say this, I'm so excited that people have learned to Zoom where I never thought they would, so. That being said, that is really, it's an in- in- incredible step for the people. Um, who have brain injuries and so I would, I mean, we obviously would greatly appreciate if. There is funding for that program that which has to continue, we cannot stop that.
Oops, hold on, I'm coming back. Cut off again, the only thing that I would say about that is that based on what we're funding them at. I don't know if that's where we were in this conversation, but they received a significant increase in funding. Um, because of the way this application process went through this year over previous years, so Ryan, what are they? With just the two programs, the residential and the case management, what are they at for this year? Like if we kept the day out?
So, the residential programming is twenty-nine thousand one hundred is what they were approved for. And the case management funding was fifteen thousand one hundred and eight dollars.
Okay.
Ryan, you're muted.
There, uh, the case management was rated at a two A. Where both the day program and the residential program were rated at one As.
Forty-four thousand two hundred and eighty is what they would. Still get under the current parameters, now if we when we tweak the, if we have to tweak the percentages, that would obviously change that, but. Based on what we, the percentages we had recommended previously, it would be forty-four thousand two As.
And so their previous funding had been around for fiscal year fifteen, it was twelve thousand two hundred. Then it went up to twelve thousand four hundred, then it went up to twenty-seven thousand four hundred ninety-five and then twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy. And then twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and six, so with this year, the tweaks in the, from A B R T to Vabron Community, they received a significant increase anyway. So I just want to point that out.
And and uh, we really greatly appreciated the, the first year we were just, or first few years, just residential program and then. Um, I've already also applied for the day program because we merged uh the day program and the residential program, two small. Um, organizations uh serving. Kind of overlapping clientele and it made so much sense that we merged and so we added then. Also to the application, the day program, hence there was this one big uh from twelve thousand, I think, four hundred to twenty-seven thousand eight hundred that that jumped.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we could consider a different category for that third one.
I would think we see the numbers because this is one of the areas that we've talked about at least, or I brought up too, and even. You know, the the increase. So it's if we're saying forty-four thousand, if they used to, if they had been getting twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand, that's.
I think that's true, other organizations too, that. You know, shelter for help and emergency was really strong in this process versus prior years.
I understand, so, all right, uh, we've been on here for a long time, but what they said in this update about the day program. Was was how we arrived at that point, but if all at a different point, I was at the same place, but if you all want to move back to somewhere, then. That's what we do.
I'm open to.
What does it look like if? What if it, what does it look like if we look at this through an equity lens? Um. What kind of, I mean, how do you qualify for these programs, how do people take part in? Um, if somebody has a brain injury. Um. Income-wise, things like that.
Yeah, and those were questions that I had the answer to, um. For instance, the case management, it says that it's for sixteen percent of the programs projected revenue. Um, the day program is nine point four percent of the projected revenue. And the residential program is nine point three percent of the projected revenue. So it seems like these programs will be able to continue. Especially with the nine percent, less than ten percent programs, if we shifted funding at this time and looked at this more, um.
Well, I guess my question is more is how are these, where are these programs serving our community? I mean, again, we were, we were addressing other issues through an equity lens, um, and other programs. And I'm I'm curious where these programs line up with our equity. Um, I mean, what are the demographics of the people being served? Do we have any of that information?
I just think when you talk about something as um, we already really struggle with um needing, you know, with making decisions based on that information. If someone came on here and started talking about severe brain injuries, I don't think that was going to change. Um, who is making up that, you know, for us. Um, I think that the anything that she would say would make us want to figure it out. Um. And all I'm saying is just based on, we got three applications in and we are funding them more than we have funded them. Um, in the past, but if. And it may be something that work out, I mean, if that is something that we may could say, if they come back and say they are not the nine point three percent or whatever percentage. Of their day program and they are back um fully functioning other than what they wrote, then that's something we could consider at a later date.
Do the other counselors have thoughts? I I I I can see this either way.
I mean, another thought I have is that is this still considered an A as far as community need? Or is it dropping down to a B in some areas?
Well, that's the thing, so we have it out of the factor, so then we would be putting the dollar amount back in, um, Ryan, where are we at now with the amount?
I will have to. I have to look, we're moving all over, all over the place, um. It's. I I I'll have to go back and and double check, I hate to, I hate to throw out numbers right now because if there's factors, I'm not considering in that, I don't want to give you a wrong figure and then. You guys are stuck on, no, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and I come back, oh, we forgot this fifty thousand and it was really two hundred, so. I don't want to run into a situation like that and put you in a bad situation, put staff in a bad situation of having to come up with additional. Cuts.
And so based on, since we are at a, we are already still in a negative right now. Unless Brian comes back, I mean, Ryan comes back and say. That we have the money that would go here or go somewhere, we should probably leave it for now and then reconsider it if that's something that people want to reconsider in the future. Like, once we get the dollars, we just don't know what the. But we're probably still, even with the cuts that we made, we still haven't covered this hundred and thirty-four thousand. So do we want deeper percentages to go from somewhere else for that?
I had one thought that I wonder if we would say, let's look at some of the folks who are getting the most money from us. Uh, like people are getting more than a hundred thousand dollars. And rather than cut them by three percent, cut them by, you know, additional ten percent or something like that, or for the amount by which they exceed a hundred thousand dollars. Or is it, I'm just trying to think of other ways that that we can spread the pain somewhat more evenly.
Well, that's what Ryan was saying, that he would look at that and it wouldn't even need to be those four percentage points that he could tell us. What the, you know, the maximum it would need to be to make this work out. So I already established that part, what we're asking right now is whether we are going to. Move the bridge line into if the other category that either.
You just muted yourself, mayor.
Well, I wasn't making any sense anyway, so maybe. Exemplary important category or the solid. Exemplary important category, or the solid category, or we're just leaving them off. And that's the, leaving that one out and funding the other two categories.
Well, I certainly believe in the program. I do think it's going to be operating at less of a capacity than it would in a normal environment. And so that's why I'm kind of in the place of like, let's put them in that 50% funded bracket for this one line item versus zeroing it out, because they did have a 1A.
And dropping them down to a 1B.
Whatever the 2A maybe, which, no, 1B, sorry, whatever the 55%. Or whatever Ryan adjusted to. Michael, what do you think?
I don't know. I mean, I could live with putting it at 2B. I hear, I just think, I'm trying to go through and see them, but I can just, there are, there are things I could see being higher first priorities to cut before services for traumatic brain injuries, in my view.
But that's what I think, looking at that, is that we, based on something that we now are saying that in ABRT, we, the VABR, we would have to tweak, maybe moving forward. They receive, they're already getting, what, $15,000 more than they received in previous years. So this is not a reduction to the amount of money that we would give them. They are receiving the money they have been receiving over the years and $15,000 more. And if you remember that process, people were able to ask for, not based just what they needed, but they were able to kind of dream, like, what do you want to do? And so they didn't give us, they didn't have to fit into a category of like only asking for like a certain amount.
I'm fine, I'm fine with that. I do think we just need to hear from everyone so we can decide and then get public comment, because I do have to leave at 5.
Yeah.
And I hate to extend or bring this up, I wanted to bring up two, two other points real quick before we get into that. One, um, one thing that was not, that, this is why I say I hate doing math on the fly, up, up, up on the, as we're moving through there, because one thing in that $134,000 figure that I hadn't accounted for was the 84, almost $85,000 that goes to the Pathways Fund each year, because that was included in that original $2.3 million total, but wasn't in this math I was trying to do on the fly. So that 134 all of a sudden goes up to almost $230,000. So that's one of those things where that kind of jumped out. And the other thing, just as a confirmation, the one thing we didn't talk about at all was the arts side of this, the arts and culture agencies and the festivals and that kind of stuff. Now, initially, like I said, we had told them at the start of this whole process, we were going to hold them harmless, did not have them fill out the full-fledged application for this current year, because we're going to, because we were still trying to figure out how to review them and where, where to fit that. So that 154,000 that we had for the arts is, in our minds at this point, is still remaining unchanged, unless we get direction from council to do that. We would just level fund those agencies. But there have been some, just, the, the reason I bring that up is because during the budget process, we had talked about that, but there had been some discussion with city council to potentially look at those as well as the, these other agencies. And since we hadn't been able to get into that at this point, I, I just wanted to bring that up, that, you know, we could go back with our original recommendation, but we had put them in that kind of unallocated, just in case council wanted to, to use the same lens on the arts programs as they have these other programs, even though they didn't do full applications. So I don't know if Kaki wants to comment on that any further.
I mean, I, they didn't do any applications. We said, we said that, we told them at the beginning of the process, they'd be held harmless for the year while we reviewed this. And so they weren't asked for updates, and they weren't asked to weigh in on how they might use the funding any differently this year. Obviously, the world was a different place then, but, but that was, that was the assurance that we provided to this group of folks then.
Yeah, and I'm not comfortable going back on that assurance. The fiscal year is basically done today, so.
Well, we will be able to get updates, like on this year.
Yeah.
About what they have been, would have been able to do. Okay. So based on that information, I guess if we want to vote, go to public comment, then while you think about it, because I'm sure somebody's going to say something that we may be thinking of something else.
I have one question. What is the pathways thing that Ryan was referring to?
That's the Emergency Assistance Fund. Kaki could explain that a lot better than I can. She's knee-deep in that every day, maybe neck-deep in that every day.
Um, some, several years ago, the city took on the responsibility for administering some emergency financial assistance funds that actually had been distributed into the community. And in the last year, we've really expanded the amount of money that's funneled through those, that emergency assistance line. You all got some data at a couple of points during the budget season about how we use that. Most of that is to provide rent relief for folks, utility relief. And then you all have had a couple of emergency appropriations this year to increase the amount of money that we've distributed through that, both as part of the community foundations pool and then other.
I remember it now, I just didn't recognize the name. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and we're not cutting that.
Okay, so what is, do, are you comfortable with keeping the bridge line at the residential and case management? Or do you want to add the day program back into it? Given three options, that's way too many, I know that, but, or do you want to move it to the important 2B category? 1, 2, 1A, 1B, 1B category?
1B.
I'm okay with cutting it.
Anyone else?
I say, I'm, I'm not happy about cutting it, but given what else we have to do, I, I think that's a reasonable approach. I would agree.
I can go that direction, yeah.
Okay. All right, so right now, before we go into public comment, we are asking the team to come up with 200 and the equivalent of $230,000 in percentage reductions and get that back to us.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, and we can shoot to bring that back to council at the July 20th meeting. That's, that's the next meeting. We would have to, and the reason I say that is because in order to do these allocations, we would need to do a resolution that council approves anyway. So we would, as I said, we would need to bring that back to you on the 20th. And I feel that we confident that if you, that we can come up with at least one scenario, given guidance from council, as to what you want to look at in terms of cuts.
Do we have to have two readings? I'm just thinking about how long we're taking for this process with these nonprofits.
It's since this is a reallocation, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, since this is a reallocation of previously appropriated funds, it should only be a one-reading resolution unless I'm mistaken, Mr. Blair.
No, sir, you're correct.
Okay.
Okay.
And unless it's more than a million dollars or something.
The last piece of, right, the last piece of, of guidance that I would ask from, from you guys before we get into the, the public comment is, would you like me to try to maintain the same kind of gaps and, and reduce evenly? Or is there one category that you think should take a larger reduction than the others? Like, say, the essential important, try to hold them as high as we can? I mean, I just, if you give me some general guidance on that, then I can create a scenario to work with.
I think that evenly would be our best.
I agree.
It'll be the easiest as well.
Yeah.
Where the, this makes it more complex, but like, as someone, another counselor mentioned, like, maybe ones that have already received a significant amount of money, like, looking at in terms of amount of received as well as a context. And then, final thing I'll throw out, I don't know if this is possible, feasible, if any of these opportunities exist, but I was just trying to, you know, think, are there any areas outside of the Vibrant Community Fund that can make at least some of the gap hole without cutting strictly within the Vibrant Community Fund? And maybe those opportunities don't exist, but.
Yeah, I would, my recommendation would be for us to stay into these dollars amount. And if we run into, if organizations come to us for other needs, that we evaluate that with the, you know, reserves, equity fund, council strategic initiatives fund, you know.
And there are other funds as well. I know we've already dipped into some of them, you know, previously in the budget cycle.
I'm, I'm hesitant this early in the fiscal year to dip into any additional funds at this, any emergency funding or strategic funding at this point, not knowing what's going to be coming this fall and what emergencies we might be looking at. That's just my input. And also knowing that with revenue down, that's affecting next year's budget.
There's equipment funds, obviously, the golf fund, the parking fund. I know some of them have already been touched, but just throwing it out.
Okay, um, public comment, we'll open it up for.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. We have time for about two or three speakers at this point before the webinar has to be concluded. If you want, if you're on the webinar and you want to speak to council, click the raise hand icon, and we'll call on you in the order in which your hands went up. Right now, I see Jay James. Mr. James, your microphone is active. Go ahead.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, members of council. I know you guys have been working extremely hard on this. Want to thank you for your service to our community. These nonprofits are so essential. And I see how you're scrutinizing everything that you're trying to do to be fair and to find ways to, to help folks. I just want to provide an update. Obviously, I'm a city resident. I'm the Assistant Director of the Bridge Ministry Substance Abuse and Reentry Program. And really, just the new information I bring to you guys is, we've been working really closely with the jail staff classification, their leadership. We had screened about 40 different individuals in that facility. And what we're trying to do is reduce that population due to the COVID-19 emergency, because an outbreak can happen at any time. You see the health department doing more asymptomatic testing. We had a death at, at one of our Buckingham prisons, which is just an hour south of us. So we're all very concerned about continuing to reduce that population. And a vast majority of people in that jail, you know, obviously are, are in different, difficult socioeconomic circumstances. As an African-American-led organization, we're very concerned about 51% of our jail being African-American, only 12% of city residents represent that demographic, and 8% in the county. So we're trying to address multiple issues at the same time. The public health issue first, and then some of the inequities that we see from a criminal justice standpoint secondarily. So we, as I said, we had those 40 individuals that we've screened. We've got a number of individuals who want to enroll in our program, who are in the process right now, as I continue to work on it every day. So just wanted to make you guys aware of that, that we're working hard every day to correct these things that are, and to keep these people safe, many of whom would not have another opportunity to receive training, to receive addiction treatment. Had this COVID-19 emergency not happened, they'd be in jail. And so through the home electronic incarceration, we have been, we are a destination for that as well as that our legal officials can use. So I know I'm going to run out of time. I just want to thank you guys. Our funding request is before you. It's about $40,000 annually for each individual that we bring in, and, and over 90% of them have no financial resources. So that request is before you. I know it's significant, but we are grateful for your consideration. And I believe we put forward a $240,000 request. So again, so grateful, grateful for the mayor's leadership on this issue, grateful for the council, and just appreciate this opportunity here at the end, guys, for, for consideration. Thank you so much.
So that came in after the, that wasn't in the initial application?
We did apply initially, Mayor Walker. And I, I'm not sure if we, if there's a question for staff. I remember appearing before you guys in person, but we had our initial funding request with Vibrant Communities. And then we submitted the new COVID opportunity that we were gracious, we were grateful to receive that opportunity to present.
Okay, thank you. So I don't see their current mayor application here.
Yeah, maybe Ryan can help us with the timeline on this, but it's my understanding that they were unable to meet their obligation for their previous year or something, and no audit was submitted that was, that was, met the, the standard created by the Budget Office for audits.
Okay. That's from the dollars that we gave to get the audit completed.
Correct. And based on their, but the organization's budget, they're required to have an audit completed each year. And the, the audit, they did send in about a month or so ago, I believe it was, the previous audit from the 2017 financials, but we still haven't, don't, they still are required, based on the Vibrant Community Fund guidelines, that were, were set out to do an audit annually. And they haven't had, done one, and they have not provided one since.
Okay. So maybe not in this conversation, but I am interested in, on the one hand, we have a ton of support, so I get that direction. We're getting people out, we're able to house them in even hotels at this moment if they need it. Hopefully, that's still an option, because I know if there wasn't a more secure plan at the beginning, that they were not even letting people out. But if this is an avenue where people can go during this time, be released from, or our residents can be released from jails or prisons and receive these wraparound services, that is definitely something that we want to look at. So I guess if you're still, then Jay is, if the financial information is in, this is something that I would want to have a conversation with council and Dr. Richardson to see how we can support our citizens who are coming, coming home.
Yeah, I thank you all. I'll say this quickly. I know we're short on time. It's two very important points. And Ryan, thank you for bringing that to the attention and working with us. Madam Mayor, the first thing is, we, from an audit standpoint, it is difficult for us, just like the people that we serve, because the majority of the folks that come in are indigent and can't provide anything financially. So we go out and we fundraise. But for us, to do an annual audit is, is nearly impossible because of, of, of the cost that is affiliated with it. So we've tried to do it every three years. We, we explained that. Ryan's been great in the Budget Office. They've been very patient with us. And we're just hopeful that a, a technicality along those lines, when we're already serving people who don't have resources, and we don't have much of it ourselves, that that won't be something that, that would, would keep us from consideration, because we know that we can, we can help a lot of people with our, our job placement and our, our services we provide.
Okay, well, yeah, I'm going to make note of this and try to figure, just have some deeper conversations to see if there's anything that we can figure out. But it's, based on that, if that's a criteria currently for vibrant community funds, it would be something we would have to consider outside of this, these allocations. But it may be something based on who you're serving during the pandemic that we could attempt to figure out.
Thank you.
Figure it out, but I feel like it's something that we can talk about a little bit more.
Thank you all for the consideration. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate it.
Mayor Walker, I'm going to have to jump off. Okay, sorry.
Um, Mayor Walker, there are no other hands raised.
Okay, look at us. Okay. All right, that's it, right? We're done? No final comments, everybody?
Staff has what you need from us. Feel good. All right.
Okay, well, meeting adjourned. I appreciate this, and we got this, this done. So I wasn't thinking, coming in that we were going to get this done.
Thank you, staff, for all the support.
Yeah, thank you all.
Special thanks to Brian.
Thank you, everyone, for being here since 1 o'clock. I know everyone's got a gazillion things on their plates. And just really, it's, thank you.
And Kathy and Ryan and all of the team, like, we know that this extra layer that we put onto this so that we could really be thorough in our assessment in this COVID environment, really appreciate it. Really appreciate the turnaround time that many people did and also that the nonprofits did to kind of give us the additional information so that we could feel sound in our decision making. So thank you very much for all those efforts and doing it in such an expedient way.
As well, for in advance for the work that they will probably still have to do in the next couple of weeks.
And Chrissy, where's Chrissy?
She popped in here.
Letitia, yeah. Listen, I hope we didn't disappoint because sometimes we ask y'all to do stuff and we do absolutely nothing with it, so.
Yeah, yeah, this was.
Chrissy has to drop off, but I'm here.
Read it all.
Okay.
Thank you.
I read it.